Okay, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the February 6, 2025 Planning Board of Dobbs Ferry Just a note that because of our long, likely long meeting this evening, we are going to limit comments to three minutes. We have a little timer there. So if you have comments on our project, unless you want to have a speaker for multiple, you know, they coalesce everything, we're going to limit everyone to three minutes of The first item on the list is 49 Clinton Avenue, the Master School. Oh, we need to open the public meeting. Do I have a second? Here. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The first item on the rule, on the, on the agenda is 49 Clinton Avenue, the Master School, AHRB review for proposed amendment to approved plans regarding screening of rooftop mechanical units. Do we have any way to speak to this?
Yes, that's me. I'm Jennifer Olson. I'm here with Seth Marks from the Master School. I'm with Marvel, and I have a drawing I'm going to pull up here. Share. While we're pulling this up, I, as you may recall, we were here at the September meeting when we received a resolution of approval for the exterior renovations of this project. We then proceeded to the Building Department for review of our, of our building permit, and upon that review, the Building Department requested that we come back to clarify one issue, one item within the scope of our work. And so that's what we're here to do, is to just discuss that one issue, and that is with the, there are condensing units placed on the roof that will have a slight projection above the existing parapet. And there, the, we made the decision to propose these unscreened because of the building's position well in the center of campus, because of the low noise level that it will be, that will come from these condensing units, as well as the minimal projection above the parapet. We made the design decision that this was a safe assumption to leave them unscreened. With that, we ask for confirmation from the AHRB. I should say, we've made no changes to these units since the drawings that were submitted in September for review. They were shown on the September drawings. There's no changes to size, configuration, quantity, position, they're the same. So we're here to confirm if those unscreened roof units were included in that resolution of approval. That's, that's the point of my presentation today. I apologize, I was not able to pull these up, but I will show you them as soon as I can. Share.
Mr. Chairman, do you need to see those, or does everyone, or does everyone on the board have on your computer?
Yeah, we have them in front of us.
Yeah, I have them in front.
On our screens.
You have them in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right, do any members of the board have questions or comments?
So are you proposing to put any screening, or just leave it as is?
We're proposing to leave it as is.
Okay.
As part of the proposed design.
And how did you determine the sound level?
We have an acquisition on our team, and so they did all the analysis of the amount of sound that would be coming from the units, and presented those, those results to the Master School, who deemed that it was not of, that it was no greater than the ambient noise that was surrounding the building.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Valerie, any issues with you?
Nope.
Anthony?
No issues.
Okay. Valerie, do we have a resolution?
I do have a resolution. Whereas the applicant is seeking AHRB approval for proposed exterior alterations to Strayer Hall, the property is located at 49 Clinton Avenue. Now for verbatim resolved, the AHRB of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for AHRB approval is granted, and the plan set specifically refers to the plan set dated January 15, 2025, including the roof plan, building elevations north and east, and building elevation south and west.
I make the motion, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, the second item on the list is a public hearing for 81 August Place West, public, for site plan approval for proposed replacement and extension of current deck with ADA compliant ramp from the front of the home to the new deck. I move that we open the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um.
Hi. Good evening.
Has anything changed from your previous presentation?
So, thanks for having us. We did, my name is John Repetti from Carroll-Curth Architects, and this is Bill Moon, client. The only thing is, when we dove deeper into the drainage that was existing on that property, we found there is a utility easement of 15 feet that basically takes up the entire side yard. We dug into the deed, provided it to the town to take a look at, so I don't know if there's wording that allows for an exemption to build onto the easement by four feet. It would still allow 10 feet access. It's not in, the proposed ramp is not in the way of the drain, but it obviously is in the easement, so if you wanted to present that, get your thoughts. I know we spoke about having some language in the approval of should this ever need to be accessible, that the ramp would have to be removed and replaced, part of the owner's responsibility, but, so that's, that's where we were at.
Valerie, can you explain the process for them to get approval from the Board of Trustees?
Yeah, so we have a resolution prepared if the board wants to move forward, and that resolution would specifically require that the, that the applicant does seek a license agreement from the Village Board of Trustees for the encroachment of improvements in connection with the site plan onto the stormwater easement.
Okay, and what's our, what's the procedure for making sure they avoid damaging the?
We also have another condition that specifically requesting that the applicant make sure that there's no interference with the stormwater pipe within the easement, and that the village engineer shall review and approve the location and depth of any ground penetration, penetration in the stormwater easement as a result of the project.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have comments or questions?
You did mention utility easement, that was, you meant stormwater, right?
Yeah, the only thing we could determine was that stormwater drain.
Okay.
There was no overhead or utility companies, it was just the town drain that goes from the street on the ground to another manhole cover in the back, and then that leads to other housing area.
Thanks. Does the Building Department have any additional concerns?
No, in the easement, there was language that if nothing can be placed on the easement, but the next door neighbor's driveway is four feet out to the easement.
Well, as long as they get that letter from the Board of Trustees, that, that will take care of that.
Well, the biggest part is if they build this ramp, and they need to get a machine in there and can, that the ramp be removed at the owner's cost.
Right.
The machine be brought in, the pipe replaced, repaired, and then put back at the owner's cost. That's what the language is going to say.
Okay, is that going to be acceptable to you?
Yeah.
Otherwise can't lead, otherwise can't lead, cannot lead a grid off the house.
You can't, because the, there's electrical panels that need three-foot currents. I, I was informed that that pipe has been recently replaced, so it's, it seems unlikely to me that that would happen, but, you know, you do have, you do have to honor that easement if it comes up.
It would have to be a catastrophic failure of the pipe, or the manhole itself, or, you know, the structure of the manhole in order to have machines go back. But because it's being built on the easement, that language would have to be.
It sounded like it needed more trust.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have a comment?
No.
Okay. Valerie, do you want to read the Planning Board Resolution?
Sure. Whereas the applicant is seeking site plan approval to construct.
Sorry, hang on. I move that we close the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Nobody wanted to say anything?
Oh, yes. Does anybody have any comments regarding this?
No.
Okay. Now the board, now the meeting, the public hearing's closed. Okay, thank you, go ahead.
All right, so whereas the applicant is seeking site plan approval to construct a rear, a new rear deck and ADA accessible ramp, the property is located 81 Aug. Place. I'm just going to go down to now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Board determines that pursuant to the zoning and land use chapter, that the dimensional requirements through Section 300 will, will be consistent with the purpose of promoting the health, general safety, welfare of the community, and hereby grants the following, a waiver of one foot, three inches from the minimum 10 foot side yard setback per Table B1. Further be it resolved, the Planning Board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for site plan approval is granted, subject to the following. It refers to the site plan set last revised January 28, 2025. No interference with the stormwater pipe within the easement shall occur as a result of the project, and the village engineer shall review and approve the location and depth of any ground penetration in stormwater easement as a result of the project. And then the following conditions must be met before the Planning Board may sign the site plan, and in there, we specifically note that the, any, any outstanding stormwater and stormwater maintenance agreement would be, need to be dealt with, with any, and then, excuse me, and any engineering issues that were raised in the hearings. And then following conditions must be met before issuance of a building permit, and that's where I have, the applicant must execute a license agreement from the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Dobbs Ferry for the encroachment of improvements onto the stormwater easement in connection with the site plan improvements.
I make the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the AHRB resolution?
Yeah, so the AHRB, again, I'm just going to go to now therefore be resolved, the AHRB of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for AHRB approval is granted, and then, again, it's a plan set that refers to the date January 28, 2025.
I make the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for proposed approval of final plat All right, I move that we open the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Nicola Sharaya with Hudson Engineering, representing the applicant from Rackwell Construction, seeking approval for subdivision of a three-lot, sorry, two-and-a-half acre lot into three lots. I think the existing dwelling on the lot will be, will remain, and there will be two new single-family dwellings proposed on the two new lots. So, as I was saying, the existing house will remain, we're referring to as Lot 1. The two new lots, Lot 2 will be a front lot, fronting onto Lefargee Avenue. The third lot in the, in the rear yard of the property will have access via flag lot, referring to that as Lot 3. Lot 2, it's a four-bedroom, 2,800 square foot dwelling with a patio in the rear yard. Lot 3 will have a third 200 square foot dwelling with five bedrooms and a deck. The subdivision requires a sanitary sewer extension, which we're proposing to connect to an existing main at the corner of Cricket and Lefargee Avenue. Both lots, they'll cry new curb cuts on Lefargee, so there'll be three new curb lots for all three homes once the subdivision is on its way to construction. Other than that, the, all the lots meet setbacks for zoning, all lot coverages met. Stormwater's been designed for the new homes, and as well the driveways. Other than that, that's it, I guess. No any other?
Well, let's start with the plat. Has anything changed since the preliminary plat approval?
No, nothing's really changed since the last time we were here. Everything pretty much remains from what you've seen last, last month.
Okay. Do we have any open concerns with the plat approval? Anybody, Valerie?
No.
Okay. And Anthony, your comments were related to site plan, not plat approval, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. It's a public hearing, does anybody have any comments or want to address this application? Okay, I move that we close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Valerie?
I just have a question about.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The strip reserved for Rex Beach. On the plat.
I'm sorry.
What is that? Just curious about it.
You've seen that?
On, on the plat. On the top of, there's a.
Oh yeah, 20-foot strip reserved by Rex Beach as per filed maps in Volume 57, page 43.
You know, I'm not sure what that refers to, but.
I'm just curious, I'm curious about it.
Yeah, I can, I can take a look and say, it didn't come up previously, but.
I just want to know who this Rex Beach guy is. But otherwise, I'm fine.
Okay. Actually, do we, do we know anything about that? I mean, there are no easements associated with it, right? Okay. It's just a comment we're not used to seeing.
Rex Beach's private bowling alley?
It goes across, yeah, the whole backside of the original property. Okay, assuming that's not, there's no legal issues associated with that. Valerie, can you read the resolution, please?
Sure, so the final plat, so whereas the applicant is seeking final plat approval to construct two new one-family residence, the property is located at 111 Lefargee Avenue. So I'm going to go down to the conditions of approval, so now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Board, the Planning Board, the Planning Board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry adopted an egg deck in connection with the project on November 7, 2024, and be it further resolved, the Planning Board hereby finds a proper case exists requiring a park be suitably located for playground and other recreational purposes within the village, and the Planning Board finds in accordance with Section 300-52J Reservation Park Land, that a park cannot be suitably located on the property requiring payment of a fee in accordance with the master fee schedule for the two additional residential units. Be it further resolved, the Planning Board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the reasons set forth below, the application for final plat approval is granted. It refers to the plan set dated August 17, 2024, specifically the plat. And then the other conditions specifically refer to the recreation fee, having to pay the, for the two additional units, also addressing any outstanding stormwater engineering comments, and then it specifically has the certain requirements associated with the signing of the final plat, which is identifying any deeds, easements, and if there's a maintenance bond that's required, as well as posting of any bond that might be required.
I make the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Still 111 Lefargee Avenue, public hearing for site plan approval for proposed new single-family dwelling on Lot 2 of the subdivision. I move that we open the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, now this, there, we're having technical issues getting stuff up on the, on the big screen?
Sure, no problem. Yep, so Lot 2 for one of.
Can you share it? No.
So Lot 2, the subdivision, I don't know if I said it before, but that portion of the lot which is being developed is undeveloped at this point. Lot 2, we're going to be building a 2,800 square foot four-bedroom dwelling with asphalt driveway and a patio in the rear yard. Everything has pretty much been bunged up as far as site layout and meeting zoning and stormwater. There was a few adjustments from our last review letter concerning just a couple typos and things of that nature on the engineering side, which I believe it cleaned up at this point, but there are no issues as far as stormwater or any landscaping issues or utility issues at this point. Right now, we're just looking to kind of answer any outstanding questions with that, that Anthony's office might have, but as far as stormwater utilities, all are shown in our plans right now. Nothing's really changed from what you've seen last month.
Anthony, you have some open items regarding this project?
Really just prior to construction, they, they noted that they would put in a drywall to pick up the relocated driveway from the existing residence, so that's something they could do prior to construction, and we just noted that the proposed sewer main extension will require approval of the village, and that will be dedicated to the village, and that prior to construction, they should file a final SWIP and filing with the U.S. State DEC.
Okay, isn't there something regarding the county with a sewer extension, or something like that?
Yeah, that, that'll require going to the county for a permit, and that's part of that process, so that's, that's something that'll have to happen.
Okay. Have you seen this memo, have you?
Yes, yes, we have. We prepared applications and plans for review. It's just a matter of submitting them to Anthony's office for his review. We have had some comments regarding the sanitary sewer, regarding, you know, I and I, et cetera, so we will make sure that's addressed, and we'll submit everything to his office so that I can review, and then we can submit to the county for their review.
Okay, have you seen anything in there that might cause a problem?
No, it's pretty straightforward. We, we should have enough edge to go by gravity. We're, you know, proposing two new structures in the right-of-way, two manholes, which will then connect to the existing main, as I said, on the corner of Cricket and Lefargee, so nothing out of ordinary there.
Okay. Valerie, we have the memo from the arborist, correct?
That's correct, you do.
Have you seen that?
I've not seen the comment, and was that recent, like this?
I think it's like earlier this week or last week.
Yeah, last week. I, I know Sarah should have sent it to the applicant, so.
We have not seen it, but we'll address anything that's in there.
Due to February 3rd.
Okay.
Yeah.
Couple days ago. Valerie, is there anything in there that you feel is, you know, would change the project?
So, I mean, I'm just, there, there are a number of comments that Suzanne wants to, she wants more information about the trees that are coming down, she wants more information about the actual, like what trees are going to be saved, so she had a number of comments in the memo, so technically, if you, you know, I do have like a draft resolution that specifically says they have to address all her comments, but I think it's going to probably be a few back, a little bit of back and forth with the arborist. If for some reason, based upon addressing her comments, there, you know, there's site plan changes, then this applicant might have to come back to this board. Also, I think, you know, Suzanne raises a number of questions or comments for the board's consideration, so that's something else you'll have to take in consideration if you're giving it, if you're giving the directive that she ultimately, that the applicant needs to address all her comments, then you are kind of deferring, to some extent, some of your authority to her, making her, making determinations on what she wants to see on that site.
Should we just wait?
So that's up to you.
Yeah.
But let's, let's continue the process. So what about the Building Department? You guys have any?
I think we should get some answers to the memo, Suzanne's memo.
Okay.
There's quite a, quite an extensive.
I read it, it's, yeah. Members of the board, do we have any comments or questions regarding this project?
I agree with that.
Okay. Anything regarding the AHRB component of this project? I mean, it is a new house, it's.
It's okay.
Well, are we, are we approving that? We're just, we don't have any, oh, we do, okay.
Okay, so, and I think we should probably continue the public hearing into the next month. Does everybody agree with that?
I agree.
Okay. So I propose that we continue the public hearing to the next meeting, which is March?
6.
6th?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is 111 Lefargee Lot 3. I believe the same set of comments are going to apply.
Yes.
While he's working on that, is there anyone here who wants to speak to this application? Okay, thank you.
So Lot 3 for 111 Lefargee Avenue, it's a 26,678 square foot lot, part of that three-lot subdivision. It's a flag lot with access off Lefargee Avenue. It's a, it's going to be a 3,200 square foot dwelling with asphalt driveway and a deck in the rear yard. We are coming off of. Stormwater system will be in the side yard as shown, we're using infiltration coltex for roof leaders, the driveway, the sanitary sewer. Be connecting here to a new manhole proposing here in right-of-way, which will. Which goes down to Lefargee Avenue and then connects to the main here at Cricket and Lefargee. So here, we have approximately four trees being removed on the site here. Let me go back, show it to you. Here, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, as part of the construction for this new single-family. Again, we're, I didn't really see too many comments as far as the engineering on this. I'm sure there's comments in the arborist memo from this week that we'll have to address, and we'll, we'll take a look at that and get back to the board on whatever, whatever we need to on that one.
Okay, since it's sort of the same project, sorry, go ahead.
I'm not sure if we opened the public hearing for this one.
Well, let's do it again, then.
Did you, I just don't remember.
Okay. I move that we open the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, does anybody want to speak to this application? Do we have any new comments from engineering or planning, the department?
Same as the last one.
Okay, anybody on the board? Okay, so I move that we continue this to the next meeting?
Second.
A second? All in favor? All right, we'll see you next month. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a pre-submission conference for 200 Ashford Avenue. Do we have someone here to speak to, from the applicant?
200 Ashford, right? Ah, okay.
Hello, architect for 200 Ashford Avenue?
Hi, this is Shane Bedali. Can you hear me? This is Shane Bedali.
He's, he's muted.
You're muted?
Please see if you're muted.
He's on there.
I'm not a panelist.
What is he talking?
Any thoughts on how we resolve this?
He's not a panelist?
Good evening, this is Shane Bedali. Can you see and hear me?
Now I can see you, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me better now? Hello, are you able to hear me now?
It might be on his end.
We can't hear you, Shane.
Can you hear me now?
It shows that he's talking. I think it's on the computer. I think so. I think something's muted on the computer probably. It shows that he's talking.
Are you able to hear me now? No?
Yeah, there we go.
Very low.
If I, if I get closer to the computer, is that better?
Yeah.
I'm very sorry. I guess you won't, you'll, you'll just look at my forehead if that's acceptable. I'm, I'm gonna share my screen now.
They just raised the volume, so you could step, you could back up a little bit.
Okay, I'm, I'm very sorry for my technical difficulties.
No, that's good. I don't think it was...
I have before you the application for 200 Ashford Avenue. We were here last month. We made a presentation. This is for the conversion of the back half of the first floor of 200 Ashford Avenue into a residential apartment. As a part of that application, we're proposing to construct this parking lot at the rear of the property. Several comments were raised at last meeting, as well as some new comments that we did receive as well. The changes that were made to the site plan since we were last before you is that the backup aisle was increased a bit, and the screening was modified to the privacy fence that's displayed here. I do understand that one of the comments raised is that the vinyl fence is not permitted as a screening item. The applicant is proposing to modify what's displayed on the drawings from that privacy vinyl fence to a decorative iron and masonry fence. In addition to that as well, we've provided a, you know, a plan for the drainage system, as well as a topographical survey. The lighting plan was as well modified, and we did receive a comment that it appears to now be in compliance with the code. And, and so essentially, we would make the, the proposition to modify the fence that's displayed to a decorative iron and masonry fence in order to comply with the code. And if there's any questions or commentary from the board, please.
Okay. We have, yeah, if you, if you'd like to start, go ahead.
Yeah, just said, I, I think that there is a alternative way of laying out the parking that uses much less asphalt. And I played around with it a little bit, enough to, you know, hang myself, get myself in trouble. And I'm, but I am quite confident that there are some other arrangements to the parking spaces that could save about a third of the paved area in the parking lot. And I think we talked about this last time, and I think it's incumbent on you to come back to us with some alternative configurations for parking that use less asphalt.
Understood. Now, may, just for a point of clarification, that's while maintaining the four spaces?
Yes.
Great.
There are ways to get four spaces in here that do not use as much asphalt as what you're showing, by about 25%.
Understood. Okay, so we'll definitely work on that. Is that something that I, it would be appropriate for me to reach out to anybody within staff once I've drafted that to, to see if I'm, I'm doing what's expected?
I, I've explained to Dan...
If you want to stop in the building department tomorrow or this, this week, next week, we can go over it.
Yeah, I suggested a few things to Dan, and he can explain them to you, and you can see what you think.
Amazing. Thank you.
Sure.
You can find all of the rules about parking in the village code.
Of course.
Under parking, obviously, but park, general requirements will show you distances and so forth.
Thank you. Okay, well, with that then, if, was, should there be any other item that I should consider in the redesign?
I would just make a suggestion. When I reviewed, I, I didn't see a lot of answers to our comments, I believe, from our January memo. For instance, you mentioned a topographic survey. I didn't see that. I didn't see grading on the plan. Looks like the stormwater is still designed for water quality event, not 25-year storm. So I would suggest going through our previous memo when you come back, and also bring in a response memo, kind of pointing out how you've addressed each item, and make it a little easier to, you know, check those items off.
Thank you. I'll make sure that's done.
And, and just, just to piggyback on the engineer, I mean, I think there's certain things that we also noted, like, for example, the floor plan for the basement just notes room, like, so what is the basement going to be used for? We had concerns about how the trash and recyclables will be collected and stored on-site. Lighting, you know, you're gonna probably have to put lighting, you know, like, maybe even in the parking lot, so just make sure, like, you know, the board's gonna wanna know, is it gonna encroach onto neighboring properties, how that's gonna affect the neighbors? So there is some additional information that we're requesting as well.
Yes, thank you. I did receive that letter today, and we'll make sure to address those, those additional concerns.
Building Department, any, other than what we discussed already, any other issues that I could have them address before the next meeting?
More going over the parking with them, the alternate designs.
Members of the board, any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Do we feel like we're ready to call for a public hearing next month?
No, this will be a referral back to the ZBA first.
All right.
So...
So what are the open variances, or are there variances that need to be addressed here?
Hold on.
They are displayed on the screen on the right here. I don't know if that's visible.
And I think...
The variances were minimum lot area per dwelling unit.
Right.
Also, maximum lot coverage, from this, it deals with the impervious surface. The applicant's proposing impervious coverage of 78.9%, where 54% is required. So it's a variance of 24.9%. And then a lot with, the applicant's proposing a lot with 48 feet, where 50 feet is required.
I, I would, though, go back to the ZBA after you've played with the parking a little bit, because I think if, if it works, the few ideas I threw out there, that the scale of the variance that you need for the impervious
Will be reduced.
Coverage will be greatly reduced. So I would go back to them after you've come up with a alternative design for the parking.
Just to clarify, that, that means I should present before them, or I should?
No, no, come back next month with changes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, come back to this board.
Okay, and then they go to the ZBA?
Yeah, you'll refer them to the ZBA.
Right, with a pause, hopefully, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any questions? Do you understand what you need to do to come back here next month?
I fully understand. Thank you very much. I appreciate all that.
Good.
We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, well, 33 Main has been adjourned. 28 South Washington Avenue, pre-submission conference for proposed construction of single-story accessory structure behind existing home.
Good evening. Thank you for seeing us. I'm Jesse Reiser, architect, but also grew up in that house, and I'm moving back in. And our intention is to build an accessory structure, which is a storage structure.
Second. I have a presentation.
This is Tyler Armstrong, who works with us. He'll, will be tagged in.
Also licensed architect.
This is the proposed structure, but first I wanted to go into a little bit of the history of the site. This is the existing house at 28 South Washington Avenue, the end across, you know, diagonally across from the hospital. As I said, I grew up in this house from 1959, went to Dobstary Schools. My mother was an architect who did a major renovation on the place. So we want to, you know, respect the quality and the type of architecture that we're proposing for this accessory building. It's adjoining this large, you know, complex, Beacon Hill. And we found older drawings of the site. 28, South Washington used to be Dudley Avenue, and you can see, circled in red, the carriage house. So it's a utilitarian structure, and what we're proposing in St. Car, there's a utilitarian building at the end of the site. There's famous gatehouse and castle on Beacon Hill. And our house was associated with the Keller Street House somewhat up the hill, and there's a defunct road which you could find 18 inches below the ground, which connected the carriage house to the Keller Street House. So we're proposing this storage structure on the northwest corner of the site, you know, within the setbacks, of course, but, you know, very close to a surrounding fence. And we sought to really kind of blend the house into the character of that part of the yard, as well as the house itself. It's 500 four square feet in dimension, and it's 42 by 12 as a footprint. The houses, I mean, the, the accessory structure is elevated up on 10 posts, so there is not really a coverage problem. There's drainage underneath it as well, by Hudson Engineering, who assisted us with...
And we do want to stress that this is an accessory structure. It's a utility structure. It's not inhabitable. We are running electricity for internal lights, but there are no exterior lights. It's, it's a storage shed. It's a big fancy storage shed.
We have to store architectural models and art installation crates in this structure. Something that came up this morning as a result, mainly of Hudson Engineering's kind of work, kind of assessment about how many trees should come down. We see a maximum of six that would have to come out, rather than, I don't know how many.
Hudson Engineering took a much more conservative approach to their tree removal, and are proposing somewhere in the neighborhood of 13 trees. We've talked with our contractor, and we hope to preserve as many as possible. We think the job can be done with six. So there's gonna have to be a back and forth with our engineer, and we'll submit a landscape plan denoting where we'd like to place the replacement trees.
And then we were proposed, yeah, to replace those six with six new trees, probably dogwoods.
I mean, one question we do have that, you know, can answer at the end in regards to the landscape plan, if that can be an addendum to our site plan with the schedule of the trees and where we plan to replace them, or if we have to contract with the licensed landscape architect to provide a separate drawing for that placement. So we'd like some clarification on the landscape plan.
So this is the view, you know, from South Washington towards the house, which you can see on the left. You really can't see the accessory structure because it's way over at the end of the north west end of the property, so it's screened by trees. And the character of the building, it's a pitched roof, you know, more or less to kind of mimic the pitched roof of the other structures. Some elevation, so it's basically serviced by six of large doors on the face of the building, where we can load the materials in. But it's really meant to be a very quiet kind of structure, one that was, you know, unobtrusive, just something that would blend in to the surrounding fence at that end of the property. So as I mentioned earlier, it's, it's elevated off of grade. The maximum height is 15 foot six at the top of the peak. We're using yellow cedar in a shiplap form, which will then treat with a silver stain. So we see it's a, it's a silver prism that's elevated up along the ground, and as minimal as possible.
And that is a scale model as well, so that's a quarter-scale prism.
The chunk.
Oh, and the structure?
Yes. Of course, it's up on little legs, which we didn't include.
Got it.
Rendering.
And this is the rendering.
Make sure Valerie sees it.
Absolutely.
Besides the weathering stain on the eastern cedar, we also plan to use a metal roof, with standing seams, similar character. We're, in keeping with, again, the quality of the roof, there's no artificial coating, so the stain is a kind of natural weathering stain, and we don't plan on painting the roof. It would be a kind of galvanized coating or bondedized coating that would also weather and patina nicely, matching the fence in the existing house.
And, yeah, the siding as close as possible.
Is there a driveway going up to the shed, or no?
Uh, no.
Okay. It's just the way it's shown here. It curves around.
I have a, I have a question that I don't really think makes a difference for you, but I just wanna, it's come up before, and this is an excuse to clarify it. If a building is, if a deck or a building is sort of lifted off the ground, is it no longer counted in coverage?
Still, still counts as coverage.
I mean, I'm sure you would be well with that.
It's impervious surface now. It's impervious surface now, over that, that far.
Under the zoning, it would still be lot coverage.
Still considered lot coverage.
It might have some benefits stormwater-wise, but they're collecting the roof water into a drywall.
Okay.
Anyway.
But from a coverage point of view, it still counts.
Otherwise, under that theory, you could.
Yeah, you could build anything you want, any side, as long as you put it on pilotee.
Right.
Got it.
So would this project require any variances?
Does not, no.
One else, one other consideration in the comments relating to the coverage, we did make a change at the building department's direction to include the oversized lot that would adjust the allowable coverage down, which we still comply with, so just wanted to clarify that point, which was brought up in the memo forwarded this morning.
Good. Okay.
The difference in the tree count, does your count include the fact that, you know, you need to protect that to the drip line of the trees to protect the root balls?
Our count's based upon a preliminary discussion with our contractor. We haven't looked with the arborist or with the landscape architect. We're, I mean, it might be more than the six, you know, it might be closer to seven or eight, but we haven't considered, you know, the drip line. I assume that we might have to remove a couple more, especially on the backside, but again, we're trying to be optimistic about removing as few trees as possible.
And if we do, then we'll replace them.
Okay, well, my feeling, and I may be corrected, is that for a small project like this, you probably don't need to necessarily include a landscape architect, but we do need that detailed out. Okay? And if you have questions about the criteria, you know, we should get the answers. Any members of the board have questions or comments?
I like it.
Sure, it'll be nice.
I think so. Building Department, are we ready to call for a public hearing?
Yeah, I think we'll be good.
Okay.
Submit the landscape and plans.
Anthony, you're okay with the?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't really have any engineering comments.
Stormwater management?
We're good with it, yeah. They're designing for a hundred-year storm.
Okay, so you like that?
Like.
Since they happen every five years now. Valerie, any issues from you?
No, I think they mentioned the couple items that I raised in my memo.
Okay, then I move that we call for a public hearing in the next meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Rob, that all went fairly quickly. Would you still like to take a break?
I'm okay.
Okay. All right, the item on the chat is Noel. It's four separate items. I'm not sure that we need to break them apart into four separate discussions. I would like to read a few comments before we get started. So, as many of you know, you've written to us, we've received dozens of emails and letters from members of the public providing comments on this application. These communications have not been ignored, and we have been shared, and have been shared with the members of the board and our consultants.
And are part of the public record.
And are now part of the public record. We've also received communications from members of the public who have felt unheard on this matter. Like any application before the board, there's a process to be followed. The first step in that process is a pre-submission conference in which the planning board reviews the application and provides the applicant's input on the application. This particular application has been the number of numerous such conferences. As I noted, your written comments during this time have been reviewed by the planning board and its consultants, and this has helped shape the project to date. Of course, work is not done. The next step in our process is to open a public hearing. This provides you, and members of the public, with the opportunity to present comments and concerns in an open forum per consideration of the board, by the board. While we could have continued under a pre-submission conference, we thought that it's best at this time to proceed to open the floor to the public comment on the record and to hear from you directly on your issues and concerns. Now, we're looking to you to provide us with any issues that we are not addressing as part of the process to date. Some of the issues that still have to be answered, just to run through them quickly, stabilization of steep slopes, excavation required for the site, methods of removal and site stabilization, methods of erosion and sediment control and stormwater management, construction phasing, duration of construction and traffic, landscaping and site restoration, visual impact analysis, consultation with state historic preservation office, traffic analysis of the proposed action, including the ability of the roadway to accommodate additional housing and emergency access within the approved subdivision, open space and neighborhood characteristics and how the proposed action will impact the overall characteristic of the neighborhood, discussion of any aesthetic impacts on the during estate or improvements to access to the estate. We also have requests to the applicant to address the planning memo dated twelve two twenty-four and the Noel landscape architect's memo dated two two twenty-five. Also, provide additional documentation that the roadway as designed meets all applicable Also, we're looking for a formal title opinion with respect to ownership of the roadway and rights of egress over same, along with confirmation of whether any conservation easements exist along the Noel. Now, before we open the public hearing, we want Chris to be elevated to a alternate of full membership, okay, since Laura has recused herself. All members of the public wishing to speak will have the opportunity to do so. Each speaker must come to the microphone and state their name and address for the record. Speakers must speak into the microphone so that people watching online or watching a recording of the meeting may be able to hear. Speakers who are present in person will speak first, those participating online will follow. All public comments and questions shall be directed to the board and not to the applicant. There will be no dialogue back and forth between the public and the applicant. Each speaker shall have three minutes to speak. Comments and questions shall be respectful, on topic, and to the point, and not repetitive. Please, if someone else has already brought up an issue, don't bring it up again. You've got it on the public record, you will look at it. All letters and emails submitted have been or will be shared with the planning board and a part of the official record. There is no need for anyone to read their submitted correspondence. Speakers may not provide audiovisual materials, but may hand us paper copies of same. There will be a hard stop at eleven PM, at which time the public hearing will be adjourned to the planning board's next meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, so I move that we open the public hearing. Do you have a second? All in favor? What would you like to present this evening? Are there new items that you'd like to show or do a quick summary?
Very brief, Mr. Chairman. David Steinmetz from the law firm Zarren and Steinmetz, here this evening on behalf of the property owner and developer, Hillside Development. I'm joined this evening by Andrew Cortese from Hillside, Dan Collins from our project engineering firm Hudson Engineering, and my partner Jacob Amir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we do not have an affirmative presentation other than to simply answer some of the questions that came up, that there were some changes that were made in response to some of the memos. We are still assembling some additional written information that will be submitted to the board and made part of the record. We do not want to belabor our presentation because we have already presented to your board verbally and in writing on several occasions. I'm going to let Dan just hit a couple of quick notes, and we're anxious to receive the comments from the public. And thank you all for convening the public hearing and doing so in the fashion you are.
Good evening, members of the board. Dan Collins, Hudson Engineering. Obviously, since the last time we were here, we've went through the town engineer, consulting engineers memo, so there were some minor changes to the plans I just want to go through before we get into everything. I'll make it quick. So since our last meeting, it was requested that we actually combine everything into one big plan set. So this isn't, it basically has a cover sheet and everything we need for. Hold on. Sorry about that. It's a big set of plans. So basically, everything's in one set, so all the work for the roadway, each individual lot, we've separated out, and on the cover sheet, there's basically an index that separates each set, each application out into their individual drawings, just so that everything's together as one, so that it's not kind of all over the place where we had different applications and different, there we go, and different sheet sets, and it kind of got a little confusing. Additionally, one of the requests that we had, that we made, that was made, we actually separated out the work necessary in our originals for the grading for each one, each application.
Can you move the mic closer to you?
Oh, sorry. I'll just do that. So essentially, we kept the overall grading plan and overall site plan, just to show that we can do everything all together. However, once we get into the roadway stormwater management plan, you can see that the road, the grading that's shown here is just to construct the roadway. Then we broke it down similarly with each individual lot, so you could see the grading on each individual lot and what would be necessary to construct the turnaround on Lot one fifty-three, as well as the stormwater improvements on Lot one forty-seven. As part of the comments for the roadway, we also added a three-foot level strip on either side, and I apologize that this is so laggy today, three-foot strip, flat strip on either side of the roadway, so that there's a little level area before it slopes down to meet grade. This was a little bit easier, it actually provides a nice area for the, a nice area for some landscaping, as well as for the guardrail until we get around that bend up top, so that's all set level with the roadway. Additionally, one of the other changes was we moved, there was a swale that was a little bit more closer to the rears of these property, rear of the proposed residences. That's actually been relocated to run along the rear property boundary. We've also added a series of catch basins to help capture that runoff and direct it to the stormwater system for the roadway, as well as added a ten-foot wide stormwater easement for the maintenance of that piping and the piping and the associated swale all the way up to the rear of the properties. The stormwater system was updated to include that additional area because we did push that to the property lines, so we are capturing a little bit more and sending it to our system. It was such a small area that not much really changed at all. Other than that, I believe, we, actually, no, wait, we made the proposed water main, so now the water main is proposed with a hydrant on top. That was based on our conversations with the fire chief. We also added a few signs along the, no parking signs along the roadway, which was another request of the parking chief, the fire chief, to make sure that they can get their apparatus up the hill to make a turnaround and come back down. The wells were also removed from the back of the property, so, because we're now proposing a water main, now we have individual water services for each property. And with that said, I think that basically brings everything up to speed, and if there's any questions on this, these changes, I'll be happy to answer them, otherwise I think we're ready to go.
I just have one question. At this point, you all own four parcels, is that right?
Yes.
And at this point, are the drawings, the various things that we're going to be looking at, they?
Well, they own, we own two parcels, and then there's contract vendee on two parcels.
Okay.
All right, so.
I'm going to call it four parcels. Are you, is your analysis and your, you know, whatever technical work you're doing, assuming that the four parcels are built up, that the land that you control is built up?
Essentially, all the work that's on here, driveways, the buildings, everything.
And the future buildings that might be in a subsequent phase, we're looking at all of that at once now.
All four lots in the roadway are all sized into that stormwater system.
Great, good, thank you.
And same thing with the water and the source as well.
Great, thank you.
Dan, you researched, what is it, state code on roadway requirements and found some new information?
Some on the access for the fire traps and stuff, yeah.
Okay, so can you coordinate with them? There's some minor, would appear to be minor changes, but important changes that need to be done to form with state law in that regard?
Absolutely, yeah, we coordinate.
Okay. Anthony, is there anything that hasn't been addressed in your memos that you want to? I mean, I know we're still fairly early in the process, but.
Yeah, no, we're kind of still reviewing their responses to our last memo, and there's a couple of items that they mentioned that they still always detail on with the stormwater system, so we'll reserve further comments, I think maybe till the next meeting.
Okay.
And we'll also get together with Dan on the roadway requirements and include that as well.
Okay. Valerie, do you have any?
So I did provide the applicant a memo, sort of summarizing the additional information we need for the Part Three EAF, and then I still have some outstanding comments in my memo, which was back in like January, that the applicant needs to respond to. And then also, just to remind the applicant, there are land, the villages landscaping, excuse me, the villages landscaping consultant also provided comments, so you're going to want to address those as well.
Okay, and Dan, would you like to speak to the additional information?
Yeah, we had a, I had a conversation today with the applicant's counsel on the title issues that we're waiting on, and they'll provide me with that information.
Okay. Members of the board, do we have any questions or comments at this time?
I want to hear from the public.
Members of the public, who would like to start?
Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this project? Isn't that how we usually?
Wise guy.
Isn't that how we usually start this?
I think I heard you did. Sure. All right, open the public hearing. So please start with your name and address.
Where I'm from, sure. Andrew Schreiber. I live in Dobbs Ferry at three oh six Clinton Avenue. I'm also here in my capacity, as I think the board knows, representing certain members of the community. Well, we will do our very best to stick within the three-minute limits and not to be repetitive. I will point out that members have organized their comments in a way that is designed to do that, and if the board is willing to sort of go with the flow of the order that certain members have organized their comments, it might go more efficiently. We're trying to do that for expedient process. In terms of AV materials, we weren't aware of that, but we do have a PowerPoint which we can submit, and then perhaps the board might be willing to let us show it the next time if it's held over, but we'll leave that for the moment, because I know I don't have much time. I'm very glad to hear that the board is looking into the title issues more specifically. We clearly have a dispute. They say the road wasn't dedicated, we say it was. Our evidence is what was attached to Mr. Cortese's letter from September twenty twenty-three. You've all received my correspondence about that. The way we read the record, in nineteen thirty-three, there was a dedication. That map included the other roads that were in fact accepted for dedication, Briery, Hildale by way of example. I see no evidence that there was ever a rejection of the dedication until the two thousand five resolution, when it was in fact demapped. So from our perspective, there's a threshold legal issue that, of course, we've raised to the villagers' attention. We know the planning board is looking at it, we're grateful for that, and of course, I guess we'll reserve further comment on that until we see what the report should say, but we are very glad to hear that you're taking that seriously, as well as what you've brought up with respect to the conservation easements, which we've also brought to your attention. There are three conservation easements, that will be talked about in more detail. I won't repeat any of what's to be said about that to come. With respect to, we cite a case called the Berman case, which, again, we have a disagreement on, and again, these are purely legal issues, but from our perspective, regardless of the issue of dedication, there's evidence of abandonment on an over, or we're just nearing the hundredth anniversary of the subdivision from a developer who's long since gone. The facts in the Berman case, we believe, do actually apply regardless of whether there's a dedication. There was no dedication in that case, and on that, again, this will be, I'm sure, exchanged And on that, again, this will be, I'm sure, exchanged for the correspondence. I won't take up or bore the board with really the sort of legalese of it, but we do want to remind the board that these threshold issues really do need to be resolved. And if this, in fact, were a legal private road, if I'm not correct about that, we still don't see how the needle gets threaded in terms of needing to have a maintenance agreement the way you would in a normal private road situation 100 years later. When you're setting up a subdivision for the first time, you arrange for people who buy into the community to be bound by certain agreements. That ship sailed 99 years ago, and we haven't seen a cogent plan as to how they're going to get around that, or to get around their obligation to not only map out, but actually to build this road. Because once you open it up, it doesn't open it up to 13 homes, and that is not from me. That's from Mr. Cortez in 2021. That's also in my correspondence. I'd lastly point out, we don't believe that there's a way to get around the steep slope calculation issue, based on the Court of Appeals precedent, as well as the village precedent, where the Court of Appeals specifically quoted the ZBA, specific to this specific slope, saying that it would be inappropriate and a public safety hazard. We don't believe that the waiver is, applies here, and we don't believe that there's any exemption. And for that, again, it's all been very well briefed in our letter correspondence. We also see, you know, a non-resolvable legal issue in terms of the turnaround of 98 Briary. That'll, again, be talked about a little bit later. And as to SECR, I'll leave it to the neighbors to comment on that. Thank you for your time.
And I just want to say, you know, we're not closing the public hearing tonight. You'll have more chances to speak to these issues in upcoming meetings, so don't feel too rushed.
Well, we are glad to hear that. Good evening, Marcus Solis, 90 Briary Road. So here we are. This is the moment we've been waiting for, our chance to speak directly to you. As this board has noted, our group, Protect the Knoll, has submitted voluminous information against this project, individually, collectively, and through our attorney, Andrew Schreiber, who you just heard from. In another letter to your board, this one from Mr. Steinmetz, he claimed that our council failed to provide, quote, "legal support for our emotional positions." Well, not only has Andrew done so, as you've heard, we will break down some of those legal issues that are still unresolved, that we're glad to hear that Chairman Hale mentioned today. But yeah, there are reasons why people are emotional. You'll hear plenty of that, because this goes beyond our group. You've seen the Protect the Knoll signs around the village. You've known that hundreds of people have signed the petition that was submitted to the board. People aren't necessarily worried about our neighborhood. They're rightfully concerned about the elimination of green space, cutting down over 100 trees, increased flooding, increased traffic in this village, residents who are fed up with the pace of development, in the pursuit of tax revenue and the green lighting of projects, just so that the village doesn't get sued. We appreciate the work that your board does in service to the community, but we know that doesn't always win the day. So we are speaking also to those who are here to guide you. To date, the village council, planner, engineer, buildings department have offered minimal pushback, and they've let the developer's attorney speed up the clock. We'll get you that. Should not be a sufficient response to serious legal and regulatory questions. So as Andrew said, we have a structured presentation. We know members of the community might want to jump in, either here or online, but we will be flexible. You'll hear from our civil engineer, and arborist, construction and traffic experts, some longtime residents that you'll undoubtedly know from their prior appointments on village boards. We will respect that three-minute time limit while addressing legal issues like steep slopes, title concerns, conservation easements, environmental issues, and why a positive declaration on SECR should not even be in question. So Protecting the Knoll is more than just about emotion. There are moral questions here, right? This board knows that a project like this impacts future generations as well, and that the rights of property owners, taxpayers, should be given weight, not just a developer looking to cash in by building spec houses. So yeah, we've waited for months, but we feel like this moment has still arrived too soon, because of all these unanswered questions, questions that should have killed this project long ago. But let's get to it.
Hi, thanks for your time. My name's Andy Roberto, and I live in 56 Luzern Road. I'm a homeowner in Dobbs Ferry and have attended many planning board and Board of Trustees meetings, and have always seen members on both boards approach projects, large and small, with professionalism, objectivity, and thorough scrutiny. Members carefully weigh legal, procedural, historic, and ethical factors, ensuring every detail is considered for the benefit of both project applicants and residents who oppose projects, with the singular intent of equitably maintaining the quality of life in Dobbs Ferry. I've watched members fervently deliberate broad aspects, as well as painful minutia on many projects, considering all the details relevant to each project, including building codes and standards, environmental and historic factors, and the concerns of residents at every stage of proposed projects. That is why I and many others are utterly baffled by the relative fast-tracking of the Knoll development through this pre-planning process, effectively rubber-stamping the voluminous but very problematic deliverables issued by the developer and the pre-planning checklist, without addressing a long list of serious code, planning, and legal concerns brought to their attention through this process. There appears to be little or none of the directed intense scrutiny that I have come to expect from this planning board. Few serious questions have been asked. Fewer have been legitimately answered. Why is this project not being held to the same high standards as others? Numerous letters by residents, petition signers, and official letters by the attorney for the Protect the Knoll group have gone either unanswered or have been mockingly addressed and summarily dismissed by the developer's attorney, with nothing more than a wave of a hand and a rude comment in pre-planning meetings, followed by almost absolute silence on the part of the board. Pre-planning meetings are not open to public input, making written inquiries our only means of engagement, yet they go unanswered. The promise of "you will get your turn to speak" is reduced to these, this three minutes. This lack of response is a betrayal of the transparency and due diligence we expect. Meanwhile, highly questionable interpretations of zoning laws, deed restrictions, and the village's own vision plan are being pushed aside to accommodate this project. Again, we ask why. Tonight, speakers will outline clear violations of legal, procedural, and environmental protection that threaten both the character of Dobbs Ferry and the safety of its residents. Before this project moves another inch, we demand a full response to these concerns. I'm sure you will provide them. The integrity of our boards and the safety of our village depends on it. Thank you.
My name is Walter Pastor. I live at 106 Briary, 45 years working and living in Dobbs Ferry. We must address several unresolved procedural issues and serious property impacts on this dangerous and illegal project. First, the only reason why we're here is the developer, not a Dobbs Ferry resident and not an owner of property anywhere near the Knoll at the time, was allowed to illegally acquire Lot Number 153 through a Greenberg, a Butters auction, only open to adjacent property owners. This allowed, this allowed, yet the developer with no legal right to bid was allowed to outbid neighbors and take control of this lot. A process meant to protect the local property owners was bypassed. A precedent meant to safeguard the community was ignored, and now this board possibly allowing the developer to permanently alter scar of this land forever, all because of the action that should have never been allowed in the first place. Secondly, the neighbors were not properly notified. The initial certified letter contained misleading statements and errors, and when the project changed drastically, certified letters were never sent. The project was so big, and it changes so much, even at the last planning board meeting, some members of the board were not sure if the project included two or four structures. Yet, it still was open to public comment. How are we skipping critical stages and safeguards? Thirdly, under the Village Zoning and Land Use Code 300-28.4, applications involving more than one acre must be reviewed by the Village Board of Trustees. Did this happen? If it didn't, how is the planning board now proceeding to public comments before the Board of Trustees has reviewed it? So again, the main question of all is, why is this project open to pre-submission, open to general comment, when it's still obviously in a pre-submission phase? The decision before you isn't just about the legally permissible use of development by one developer. It's about the negative consequences to dozens of families and the entire village. One project, one legal loophole, one rushed approval can permanently alter the landscape, the safety, the character of our homes and neighborhood. The question, question isn't just, can you approve this? But should you approve this? Process matters, transparency matters. If we allow the unlawful shortcuts, inconsistencies, and oversights to stand, what does it say about the integrity and the system meant to protect? If we do not answer these critical questions now, when will we? How would you feel if this was happening next to your house? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Steve Davis, and while I do not reside in Dobbs Ferry, I reside in Arizona. I am a professional New York-registered engineer, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Protect the Knoll, who have asked that I review the drawings and provide them with an engineer's perspective. To that end, I have reviewed Mr. Cortez's plans, beginning back with the January of 2024 submittals onward. And I have submitted these findings to the group, and they have submitted them to you. So tonight, I wish to briefly address those. My methodology is simple. I placed the drawings for Mr. Cortez's project on one site. I placed the city's codes and vision plans on the other, in good faith that those are what are to be followed. I found nominal adherence to the, much of the design in there, with one glaring example, which is the road, the access road. Suffice it to say that virtually every aspect of geometric design is non-compliant. This is non-compliant with listed codes in the Dobbs Ferry code. And so I tallied 18 of those. They're listed in detail in the reports. They can be read there. Again, wholly uncompliant. I ask you, read the report. This road is an unsafe design, and it runs counter to the village plan. Why would this be? The cause is clearly an impossible matchup of a 100-year-old corridor with a steep, very steep rocky knob and today's codes. If you take nothing else away from this presentation here, understand that that paper street, coupled with that topography, will never yield compliance. No amount of engineering will cure those deficiencies. In witness to that, I have reviewed the latest January full submittal and find not one single of the 18 original listed deficiencies, not one single one, has changed. It marches on out of compliance. Now, it's been pointed out that there are other roads that have steep sections, but these roads were in compliance in the day where they were built, and none of them carry the full 18 issues of the Knoll. It's also been argued that this is a private road. But how can that be when your code says that all streets and right-of-ways shall be dedicated to the village? And so where does this leave us, given that it is not possible to cure the deficiencies within the constraints of that corridor? And given that the corridor supposedly no longer even is available for use? It can only mean one thing. That is, that configured as it is, there is no pathway forward for this project. And it can only mean, without a path forward, that it must be halted. Thank you very much. We have more copies of the report, should anyone wish them, the civil design reviews. I'd be happy to provide those.
Anthony, you have those?
Yeah, I believe we have those, yeah.
Again, please speak into the mic. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Allison Eggleston, and my husband Adam and I are the owners of 98 Briary Road. As you see me standing here before you, know that Adam and I, our son, and our dog Rusty, are the front line of this project. Our property, our lives, and our well-being stand to lose the most if Mr. Cortez is allowed to rush this dangerously flawed proposal through to approval. I already know the answer to the rhetorical question of, why do villages like Dobbs Ferry have building and road codes, as do all of you, and as does Mr. Cortez? Mr. Cortez has proposed to build two new single-family homes, and on his plans, you can clearly see a front yard setback of 20 feet, the minimum requirement. If he submitted plans that did not comply, we trust that this board would not allow the project to proceed until the plans were amended and the minimum requirement met. So how could the board and the village legal council allow a so-called private drive to be built, which, as Mr. Davis has clearly pointed out, must be a road dedicated to the village, that would force my family's home, very much against our will, out of compliance? The setback from our home, from our bedroom windows, would be a mere six feet from the easement. Six feet. The village must recognize the extreme adverse impact that this would have on the value of our property, the harm to our health from vehicle emissions mere feet away from where we sleep, the intrusion of vehicle noise on our quietude and peace, and the danger to the safety of my son as he plays in what would be the non-compliance sliver of setback that would be left in the wake of this development. Mr. Cortez and his team may argue, as they have in other instances, where the board has asked them to account for a further view, that we are off-project, and that they cannot possibly be held responsible for effects on adjacent properties. But yet, Adam and I are one of the many co-owners of the nonexistent road known as the Knoll. Therefore, we are very much on-project, and have been since the Knoll was drawn back in 1926. We would uniquely bear the brunt of every car, landscaper, delivery truck, and emergency vehicle that would pass every day over our deeded property. Meanwhile, the hypothetical residence of Mr. Cortez's proposed homes would enjoy the benefit of compliant lot sizes and all the very real protections these regulations are intended to impart. Some individuals sitting in this room may now be considering crucial information that was not on their radar before. I am an educator with over 12 years of experience. I've taught children from first grade all the way up to 12th grade, and I believe that some foundational golden rules that every human should follow are very relevant to this project. One, that just because someone else does something wrong, it doesn't make it okay for you to do it, too. And two, you don't know what you don't know, members of the board. But once you know better, you do better. We hope the board looks at this project with every crucial fact at hand, I'm on my last sentence, because at the end of the day, the planning board and the village will be accountable for the outsized negative effects of this project, should it be allowed to continue, on the environment and on the people whose interests they represent. Thank you.
I am Allison's husband, Adam Eggleston, residing at 98 Briary Road, with my son, Abbott. The village board, using the standard of village code and the vision plan, is meant to uphold the character and well-being of the community at large. I'd like to speak to the fact that the 2010 vision plan is, in fact, the current vision plan for the village, and that it is undeniable that every aspect of the proposed development goes completely against that vision. From the development of paper streets to destroying green spaces and the character of the neighborhoods, the vision plan even goes as far to call out the Knoll by name for special protection. The development offers no solutions for increased access to the nature preserve, nor includes pedestrian walkways, trail access, bike access, or any regard for public use and safety. The road itself, as our engineer has pointed out, poses not just a danger to traffic and pedestrians in the immediate area, but also to the very home in which my family resides. What is a vision plan for, other than to create a better environment and future for the entire village and for the individuals within it? In our case, as you saw on my wife's slide, our small property is being gradually permitted out of existence. As one of the oldest homes in the Knoll area, where it used to enjoy space on either side, it would now become but a small, green postage stamp, surrounded by asphalt and hardscaping on all sides, should this project be approved, and be forced out of compliance with all current zoning laws. It has been very disheartening to feel that there may be a chance that our elected representatives do not have our interests in mind, that they might permit a development that would cause active... active harm to my family's property and well-being. Our fear is that the Board of Trustees and the planning board lack vision and are in the process of disregarding a vision plan that represents the minimum standard of how we move forward as a village, as they are currently the standards of almost every forward-thinking municipality nationwide. My fear is that it is my family's home, our safety, our quality of life, our well-being, our total financial stability, that will suffer the greatest losses from this careless disregard. I want to believe that the board representatives would have more interest in preserving the quality of life for its citizens, rather than to appease the interests of developers who, if allowed, will simply take their profits and run and have nothing more to give back when they are gone. If you somehow take the stance that you have no legal influence over the course of such developments, you have no reason whatsoever to be a board. I ask you, what do you exist for, other than to prevent situations like the one that we're talking about tonight? The board may want to distance themselves from the vision plan, but we do not. To dismiss its considerations will be at your own and our own detriment. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to the board, and thank you for allowing all of us to speak. My name is Lou Diamond Phillips, a new arrival here to Dobbs Ferry. I'm here with my wife Yvonne and our daughter Indigo. And we moved here a little more than a year and a half ago from Manhattan, and prior to that, we were in Los Angeles for a long time. Don't hold it against us. But now you know why we're in Dobbs Ferry, and we have fallen in love with this place. We are patrons of many, many businesses up and down Main Street, from Half Moon to the Parlor, including the library, which we go to almost every week. And so it is our aim to be engaged and supportive citizens of Dobbs Ferry. I look at this project as an absolute infringement on what is truly, I think, the heart and soul of this village that we've come to love in such a short amount of time. I've been to that site where Adam and Allison live. I don't know how the heck you're going to get a road in there, to be quite honest. I mean, you're trying, it seems to me like you're trying to shoehorn something into that. One of the reasons that we moved here was to be adjacent to the Juring Nature Reserve, and we have enjoyed the wildlife, the birds, the animals, all of it. And, you know, to not be too repetitive, but this project will almost irrevocably affect the environment and the ecosystem here that so many people love and cherish. I cannot imagine what the families are going to go through for perhaps years as this construction goes underway. We live about a half a mile as the crow flies away from it, so yes, we will be impacted, but not as severely as Adam and Allison and many others. But, you know, those are small roads, and I think the main artery and the side streets will all be affected by the amount of traffic and the construction vehicles that are going to be there. You know, so I can't speak as eloquently and as passionately as many of those who will be directly impacted by it, but there are families with children, you know, who are who their way of life, they moved here for peace and serenity. That is going to be upended for a very long time. I cannot speak necessarily, and many, many people have tonight, on the impact of the construction itself, sewage systems and runoff and excavation and all of it. I mean, you guys know better than I do, you know, what that's going to do for a very, very long time. The thing that concerns me, and I was here once before, you may remember, the thing that concerns me is what seems to be an accelerated timeline. And as others have noted tonight, it seems like we're rushing into this without due process. I think these people, I think this village, I think our environment itself deserves for us to cross the Ts and dot every single i and to look at all of these things and to assess it. To repeat something Robert said earlier, you know, just because you can doesn't mean that you should. And thank you so much for your time.
Hi, Anthony Giuliano. I used to own 87 Briery Road, now I own 93 Briery Road. I had four lots. I'm a builder myself, but I reduced the amount of lots, property, to one home, probably the best-looking house on Briery Road. I bring value to the area, so I don't want my property to devaluate. I, you know, so with that being said, I own other property in town, which I pay a lot of taxes, but at the same time, did the village personnel ever go up there? I'm a little nervous. I'm not familiar with Loudspeak, you know. Did the village ever take a ride up there? I look at this tree. Recently, I had a tree fall on my house. It was a lot of damage, and my neighbor doesn't want to pay me, pay the damage. These trees are back there. If they fall on my house, they'll destroy my house. What are we doing about it? Who's going to do anything about it? I need some answers. And where we going with this? I like to see something done nice altogether, right? We live in a beautiful society, town, but we need to come together so everybody is in peace. I've been there since 2000. I built my house in 2000, finished in 2002, and I'm proud of where we are, and I continue to live there. I'm not anti-developing, because I am a developer myself. I have 41 acres in Armunk, which I want to develop. So, but I just want to see things done right, you know, as far as the code of the town. And that area was demapped a long time ago. A builder from Connecticut, from Canada, they didn't let them build. I'm just saying this, okay? This, I'm not making this up, so this is all being said. Like I said, I'm a builder, and I do things. So sorry for being a little nervous. You know, I'm usually, I'm not a good speaker, plus I have an accent. Don't think less of me, though. You understand here? So we have to have a good analysis of things, all right? I thank you very much. I just want to put my two cents in, that's all. But we got to take care of those trees. I'm really bored about it. [applause] Who I have to speak to? Who I have to speak to about the trees, man? The trees are huge. They're 150 feet high. Nobody's done anything about it.
Hi, David Santini, 104 Briery Road. In 1999, the village was granted and accepted conservation easements on three of the lots on the former paper street known as the Knoll. This was done with the express intent, quote, "to assure that the property will be retained forever in its existing natural scenic and forested condition and as parkland, and to prevent any use of the property that will impair or interfere with conservation values of the property," end quote. The easement goes on to specifically list the following as, quote, "prohibited uses, building, storage, deforesting, or any construction whatsoever, including grading or regrading," end quote. My wife Susan and I own two of these lots, numbers 144 and 145. These lots extend to the middle of the former Knoll paper road, and the conservation easements on them extend to that same center line. Yet, the intention of the proposed development by Hillside Street is to remove trees from both of these lots, regrade them for a water retention swell, and to install a private roadway on one of them. All of these activities are specifically prohibited by the conservation easement contract. Last July, this planning board received a letter from our lawyer, Andrew Schreiber, in which he expressed the concerns that I have just described. The Board of Trustees also received a similar letter from Mr. Schreiber that month, informing them of the existence of the conservation easements and requesting a response via council to explain the village's position on the matter. To date, we have received no answer from either board. I did my own research about the state of New York's position when it comes to conservation easements and access easements that pertain to the same piece of property. My research confirmed that in court case after court case, the rights of conservation easements outweigh those of access easements. Look, my wife and I are not allowed to touch the conservation easement lots we own, except to use them as parkland. We will be damned if the village allows a developer that's building spec houses for profit to move even one spoonful of dirt and harm one root belonging to any of the trees on our lots. The village has agreed to a contract, and we will ensure that it honors that contract. More than six months have passed since the village received those two letters from Mr. Schreiber. During that time, the developer has spent tens of thousands of dollars on legal counsel and engineering plans for a development that he ultimately will not be allowed to build because of that promise the village made in 1999 to conserve part of the Knoll. You, planning board members, have the means to stop this folly. Thank you, as always, for your service to our village.
Sir, so as I understand it, the only conservation easements that have been found through title searches and every effort on our part, and when I speak with that, you know, it's by the village, were the three lots on the other side of Briery at the entrance to the Juring Estate. If you have documentation supporting your position, please submit it.
Okay, you have it. My July 25th letter to the planning board.
To my, to my knowledge, that has not been received. So could you, could you please do it again?
The Board of Trustees have it, and you have it, to my letter, Mr. Schreiber's letter. But I, of course I will.
Okay.
And I'll say in addition, through a FOIL request to the building department, they supplied it to me. They have it all, sir.
So hi, Chairman Hale and planning board members. My name is Rachel Danifer, and I live at 52 Luzern Road, and I do want to thank you for your service to the village and for listening tonight. I think it's clear that we oppose this development. However, should the road be built, we reserve our right to access our property. We are the owners of Zero Luzern Road, also known as Lot 154. While our property has a Luzern Road access address, the access to our lot would be via the Knoll, should this road be developed. The legal access to this lot would be via the west-pointing sidearm of the Knoll. You have an image of it here on the slide. The current proposal to develop the Knoll calls for a Y or hammerhead turnaround for the emergency vehicles on this sidearm of the Knoll with a four-foot-high retaining wall at the end of the emergency turnaround. This design would effectively deny us our legal right to access our property. Therefore, we ask you to reject the current plan. The proposed development cannot be allowed to interfere with the property rights of neighboring property owners. My husband and I brought this concern to your attention in a letter submitted on November 27th. We know you read the letters, and you usually address concerns, so we don't understand why you haven't asked the developer to update his plans, including at the December or January meetings. I'd also like to highlight additional concerns. The developer bought Lot 153 during an auction that he wasn't qualified to participate in. He must have known that the actual lot size is too small to build a house on, and steep-slope regulations make the buildable area even smaller. As you can see, if you go to the next slide, the steep slope would result in us looking at a house that, from our perspective, would basically have three stories. On top of that, he wants to use part of Lot 153 for the emergency turnaround. As I said before, he's proposing a Y turnaround, but the village code calls for a circular turnaround at the end of a cul-de-sac. And once again, as I said before, this design denies us our legal access to the, our land because of the four-foot retaining wall. We're very surprised that this proposal so far has been allowed to move forward and that you haven't taken any actions to address this or the other legal, engineering, and code issues that come with this proposed development. Thank you.
My name is Robert Barbera. I'm a 37-year resident of Dobbs Ferry, living at 66 Luzern Road, and I also happen to be the owner of Lot 150 in the Knoll, which is next to one of the proposed development lots, Lot 151. There are numerous issues regarding this proposed development, and I've written numerous letters to the planning board on some of these concerns. Tonight, I want to bring your attention to the broader destruction of the wooded Knoll by the proposed project that extends past the four lots planned for development, and that's highlighted in the green area. So the developer not only wants to build on the four lots, they want to go in and deforest the land leading up to the Juring Estate. The proposed action includes destroying of at least 12 large trees, plus digging and regrading ground leading up to the Juring Preserve to build what they call a grass swell for redirecting the water drainage. This proposed grass swell would be constructed across my property, 151, as well as the other property owners, which extend to the center line of what is now the old map paper street. The construction of this grass swell and the destruction of the natural environment leads to the, to be, needs to be removed from the proposed plans. At the last planning board meeting, the developer lawyer, I'm not going to read them, skip that part, just time-wise, next one. I would also like to raise concerns regarding some of the specific impacts and potential dangers to the trees and the homes on Luzern Road. First, there's a very large tree, over 24 inches in diameter, that's right on the border of my, on my lot, on the border with the lot that's proposed for development. That tree was not included in their, their plans. Clearly, that tree will be impacted by the construction. In addition, there are three large trees on the borderline, on the hill of Lots 151 and 152. They're on the hillside facing the houses on Luzern Road. These four trees are very important trees as they provide the visual tree frame and foliage of the Knoll to the broader neighborhood, given their size and hilltop position. The construction of the houses and the digging of the proposed drainage line, which they just moved closer to those trees, will jeopardize those trees, weaken their root system, and make them vulnerable for falling over. Given the size of these trees, it would be, cause severe damage to the houses below. In closing, I'd like to ask the board to look at the bigger impact this development has and follow the village plan, which specifically states to control further subdivisions to the extent necessary to preserve the character of the neighborhood, and to take whatever steps are necessary to protect the Knoll. I made the investment to protect the Knoll with my recent purchase of Lot 150, and I asked the planning board to take whatever steps are necessary and not fast-track this development at the numerous legal questions and code violations. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Cohen. I've been living with my family at 18 Secor Drive since 2008. My property abuts the D-MAP paper street under discussion tonight. I want to highlight a critical issue, was already raised briefly, but a little bit more detail. How is this process this far along without first understanding the title rights of the properties involved? One would think that is the first step for any development, but here we are, already at the level of public comments, without the village having properly addressed this issue. The details are complex and laid out clearly in our lawyer's letters. I'd like to give some highlights, and I'll start by pointing out a pattern of mistruths presented by the developer's lawyer on this topic. I urge the board to not take the developer's claims at face value. Instead, please focus on the facts. For example, the developer's attorney stated in December 24th, 2023 letter that their legal team conducted a thorough title search. Yet, when our FOIL request finally came through last summer, we learned that two lots in the Knoll area were not even included in that search, only one. Since then, we have asked that this be addressed repeatedly and have heard nothing. That means the findings and presentation are incomplete, and key legal questions remain unanswered. As you can see on the slide, the letter from Benchmark Title Agency, offered by the developers, proof of their supposed research, does not actually analyze or address the legal concerns we raised. It simply indicates this company is willing to offer insurance to an owner of just one lot, Lot 147. How is the planning board allowing this process to proceed when we all know that this proposed project involves more lots than just this one? We have seen no information about Lot 148 at all. The developer's lawyer stated clear non-truths on this topic at the December planning board meeting. He said, and I quote, "We have measured and utilized the property to the center line of the Knoll. We have discussed that with Mr. Oliveri, with Ms. Manastra, with Mr. Posen, to the extent that my client owns to the center line of the road according to its title company. They are allowed to utilize that for mathematical purposes." This is clearly not at all what the title company put in their letter. In fact, the whole approach by the developer's lawyer to this topic is actually absurd, because the title company is not writing the village code anyway. And specifically, how And specifically, how can this title company even insure Lot 147 for the full bed of the proposed road on the Knoll, seeing as this would violate my ownership rights? I'll remind the board that as an abutting property owner, I actually have ownership rights to the center line of the paper street myself. Thus, this proposal seems to be paving right over my rights, pun intended, and awarding them to the developer. No acknowledgement, no discussion, nothing. Let's not continue to sweep this issue under the rug. Thank you.
Steve Sudak, 23 Highland Avenue, Dobbs Ferry, resident for about 30 years in Dobbs On the left-hand side is a property card downloaded from the town of Greenburg. This is the area of the lot recognized by the town of Greenburg, the lot area upon which the town of Greenburg assesses lot for taxes. This is the lot area, period. On the right side is the lot calculation shown on the drawings. After deducting for steep slope, incredibly, the lot area has dramatically increased. The reason is that the half area of the adjacent streets have been added in. Now, the town of Greenburg would love to inflate the taxable lot area by including the half area of the abutting streets, but they cannot, and they do not. They use that number. This is the area of the lot you must use as a basis from which you deduct the steep slopes. I know this to be true, and you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning board also know it to be true. You cannot add to the lot area by including the half foot of the street. The unadjusted lot area is the area bounded by the lot lines, a line dividing one lot from another lot, or the lot from a public or private street. Those boundaries yield the area for the tax lot. You deduct steep slope areas from that number, period. The front yard setback is measured from the front lot line, not the middle of the street in front. The side yard abutting a street is measured from the side lot line, not the middle of the street on the side. At streets, the engineer has dimensioned the setback lines from the lot line correctly at the edge of the right-of-way. He then draws a second, quote, "lot line" at the midline of the right-of-way to calculate the lot area. There can't be two lot lines, one to satisfy one condition and another to satisfy another. The drawings show two lines. The drawings also have other anomalies. Code clearly defines a lot line, a line that divides one lot from another lot or from a public or private street. That's the basis of all the technical calculations like steep slope deductions, coverage, floor area ratios, and yes, taxes too, always, period, end of story. The planning board knows full well these calculations are presented are nonsense and the lots are non-compliant with the zoning code. On at least two occasions in the past, the planning board has rejected proposed development in the Knoll for non-compliance with village code. Recently, the steep slope law has made this development even more non-compliant. The drawings misrepresent lot lines to achieve one purpose and take collectively, taken collectively are at cross purposes with each other. As it has done before, this board should summarily reject these plans with their fictional lot areas. Thank you. While I have 13, while I have 12 minutes, 12 seconds, these are some of the other calculations. 67% increase in the lot area, 84%, 77%, crazy, does it shouldn't happen.
Jason Baird, Number Two Summit Terrace. The New York State law is clear, the planning board must assess environmental impacts before approving a project. That's the purpose of Secra, to ensure transparency and protect our community from irreversible damage. A completed EAF form determines if a project has no significant impact or the impact is enough to require a full EIS via a positive declaration. At the last planning board session, you somehow flew through the EAF in 20 minutes. You acknowledged impacts in seven of the categories, but somehow you marked no impact on 11 categories, including all the ones listed here. The category of flooding, you rushed past it quicker than stormwater running down Briary Road. Over 115 trees were, are going to be completely destroyed by this, and you said no impact on the species that call that the Knoll their home. You violated the village's own legal conservation easements and you ignored the category of consistency with community plans. These aren't oversights, it's a failure to protect our land and our future. Now guys, we appreciate your hard work, you know, we know you're all volunteers. We're all neighbors, we're all in this together, like, we appreciate the responsibility that you guys have. We are going to take my three minutes to talk about the EAF and why it's important so we get this right, okay? And then there's going to be some more speakers to talk about all the different categories, so we take the time to do it, because there's 120 questions on the EAF, and somehow only 9% of them were marked that have a large impact. Over 70% of the form was just dismissed. You just said no impact on 84 questions. So that means about 90% of the form, 91% of the form was marked as no impact or no or small impact. So after hours of research, talks with experts, and a few more hours of reading secret documentation, a team of us reviewed all the 120 questions to assess the, assess the actual and real impact here, and I call this, sometimes it takes a village to complete an EAF form. So you can see that the impacts go up dramatically across the board. And here's some of the questions that you marked no or small impact on. Again, there was 91% of them marked this way, but, and, and the words are, the questions are like, it may have an impact on existing drainage patterns. It may change stormwater flow. There's so many more questions that you guys just skipped over. We know that that's not true. We know there's other construction forms out there, but these impacts shape our environment, our safety, and our community's future, so we need further research, investigation, and accountability here. Proper documentation on the EF, EAF is essential and it's a legal requirement. The next speaker is here will show us why these impacts are real, the risks are serious, and that a positive declaration is the only lawful path forward. Thank you.
My name is. Hello, my name is Abel Baird, and I've lived at Number Two Summit Terrace for the past 13 years, three months, and 22 days. Evidently, that is my whole life. I'm here because this project will seriously impact the land and harm our future. I love nature and I love walking in the woods. The Juring Estate is one of my happiest places. The EAF Section 1's questions are about the impact on land. The developer skipped answering the first question. On my homework, well, I don't get good grades for skipping questions. That's a bad start. The planning board is right to check a large impact for question B. This construction would require you to completely ignore village codes that keep families safe. The steep slopes make it illegal to build here. Everybody can see that, and non-Earth grade expert speakers have already explained why that's a huge problem. However, two answers are currently incorrect on this form. Question C, answer states building on bedrock will have no or small impact, but that just doesn't make sense. If you've been to the site, you've seen the big rock formations sticking out of the ground. Here are the pictures to remind you. Bedrock is a problem for building stormwater drainage and digging deep holes. Also, it's a big deal for instruction too. On question E, the board checked no or small impact for construction time, but the developer's own plans state at least two years to build. What if the developer builds four houses and then more after that? That means this is a multi-phase project, at least two years of digging, blasting bedrock, huge trucks, and non-stop construction. That is not a small impact. They're cutting down 115 trees. That's definitely not good, and it breaks me, my heart that we could even think to do that. The EAF's directions state clearly, moderate to large impact must be checked if the person is multiple. I also got these two questions correct. Question G, removing over 1,000 tons of dirt and rock is a large impact, and question F, increased erosion is also a large impact. But checking a box on a form does not give us the full picture. Ripping through bedrock, years of heavy construction, and relentless erosion will do more than just scar this land. This destructive project will erase the natural beauty and stability of this special place forever. Planning board needs to get this right. This project will have a large impact on the land and our future. This is one of my happy places, this is my future. Please acknowledge the large impact this will make. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am Dr. Daniel Sable. I live at 15 Temple Road, and I am here to talk about the EAF Part Two. Question number three, which you guys again have answered no, on the impact on surface water. Now, if we just take today, for instance, and we think about water that's lying and just sitting there, we had last night brine spread, put on the road before the, you know, our snowstorm. Today, we had how much, how many tons of salt that were put on the road that kind of let off into the water? And basically, the surface water, the wetlands, the Sawmill River Creek, and so forth are going to be very and highly affected by this. The, the drainage on the Fergie is not in the best condition to begin with. By adding more of an impact on that, I think is going to create more of a problem, more backflow. Sometimes we get the smell of sewage on my side on Temple Road. We get water puddles that are dirt. Could we just switch to the next? Oh, there we go. So you can see here, there's, there's a sewer basin or catch basin right here in the middle picture, and there's, you know, we have sandbags down to hold the water from going into them. That to me means that that's a failure of our drainage system. So then where is this soil and the erosion going to go? If you guys checked that, no, there's no problem, to me, that means that you rushed through to just get through this document without thinking about the pollution that it's going to create. So we have the soil runoff, we have light pollution, we have, you know, construction from the, the trucks, the vehicles with air pollution and our air particles and so forth. This is all going to be going right into the Sawmill River, and it's going to affect, you know, a lot of the problems that they already have there. Now, a year or two ago, there was a problem, I think at 87 the Fergie, where you guys had a problem controlling the erosion there with the construction. And we had a problem at Blue Park with erosion with the construction. How are we going to handle this? You know, you checked, if we can go back again, you checked, sorry. You checked, no, there's no impact on surface water, but as we can see, there clearly is. So I'm hoping that you all, the board, everybody in here agrees that this is a major problem and that this needs to be checked to, yes, that there's going to be a major impact on standing water on the Sawmill River, which is something, they said you need to, you know, a body of water that's close, so the runoff is the Sawmill River. That's, that's the primary board.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I live at, up on Temple Road. Anyway, longtime resident, 14 years. I'm a construction and development professional. I'm pro-development, I'm pro-fair housing, and this, this, this project is neither of those, and I'm not for it. I'm here specifically to talk about the storm retention system as it's designed. The storm system includes 13 catch basins, nine manholes, some deeper than 10 feet, 21,120 cubic foot water attenuation gallery, which requires removal of nine trees just for itself. And I put up on the screen, for example, this is by the, by the manufacturer that they have in the SWIP. This is an example of what they're, what they're proposing to put in. So this stormwater attenuation gallery consists of 16 double-trap vessels, 16 hydrodynamic store separate, storm separators, 16 overflow cartridges. Some unanswered, unasked questions that I think need to be asked. One is, what will happen to the house next to it that we've heard about that's built on the rock with a unconsolidated cinder block foundation that's mere feet from where all this rock breaking is going to happen? Two, how will the rock be broken? And three, the inlets behind the new houses at the top of the cliff over by Bob's house, are they going to be breaking rock to put that in? If they are, will it need rock bolts to hold the, hold the wall together? If it needs rock bolts, how will they access it? Will they go bring a drill rig through Bob's house? Will they bring a drill rig through somebody else's house? I'd like to point out that this is an industrial-style water filtration system that's built by Storm Trapp Systems of Romeo Ville, Illinois. It's used for industrial, civil, institutional, and multifamily mixed-use and residential commercial developments. Some examples of where it's been included, where it's been installed are the Prairie Flower Casino in Carter Lake, Iowa, the city of Aiken, 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 South Carolina, Eagan Dale Industrial Park in Eagan, Minnesota, a local place, 200 Old Tappan Road. This place has 99 townhomes, 21,000 square feet of retail. This particular system at the Knoll, two houses, one road, 21,000 cubic feet of stormwater attenuation gallery. The last thing I want to point out is it's got an eight-step servicing for the homeowners' association. It has to be done twice a year, and I don't see how a homeowners' association of two is going to maintain this thing, and it's going to become derelict. Thank you. 47 Temple Road.
Our next speaker is a construction expert, and he couldn't make it tonight, but he is available to join via Zoom. If you would allow him to, for his three-minute speech, we could talk that out right here.
Um, our plan, yeah, sure.
Thanks. All right, Peter, welcome to planning board. Peter, you're still on mute. You can hear us?
Can you hear me? Hello? Hello, hello. Hello, my name is, my name is Peter Joslin. I live at 31 Secor Drive. I have been a Dobbs Ferry resident for about 22 years, and facilities director throughout that entire time. Phil Harwood, very nice job, well done. I still want to love to see how that, that exists online. But I'd like to talk tonight about the EAF and flood plan. This is, and you know, in the last meeting, it sounds like the village engineer and planner are going to rush through the EAF. However, if one reads the instructions.
Peter, can you talk closer to the mic? It's, it's very hard to hear you. Please.
Can you hear better? Yes?
It's, it's a, it's a bad connection. Can you speak louder into the mic?
I could speak very loud. Can you hear that? All right. All right, so I'm not mad, I'm just talking loud. However, I'm talking about the EAF Section 5, that it was marked no on the impact, and basically it was rushed through, and it deals with flood plans. However, if one reads the instructions, it is very clear that there's a broader meaning beyond formally designed flood plans. The heading of the section is titled Impact on Flooding, and the language in green is explicit.
explicit. Some projects may be outside of the floodplain, but still be in an area with a known flooding history, coupled with changes of weather patterns. This construction can make floods more severe and increase everyone's chance of being flooded. As the proposed action may result in development of lands subject to flooding. Lands subject to flooding planning can include, outside of 31 C-Cor, lands where development will change drainage patterns so as to create potential for flooding. It is proposed action, whether the proposed action will result in development of lands subject to flooding? Check yes, and answer sub-questions A through G. But the Board checked no. Now, anyone in the neighborhood would win the argument that these lands are subject to flooding, and your interpretation focusing only on formally designated floodplains is incorrect. I can say, as a past Little League president, I really do appreciate what you've done. I understand how hard it is to volunteer. We appreciate the Board, especially for stormwater runoff studies and the developer for completing the SWPPP. But this EAF form is just asking, is there an impact? The EAF has declared flooding impact must consider more than mapped floodplains. It also applies to areas with reoccurring stormwater runoff issues, which creates flooding in the neighborhood like Briary or Liffery or C-Cor. This isn't just our interpretation, it's what New York State's DEC clearly states as an area with known flood history. Trust me, my house has flooded four times in six years. Must mark yes to this action. Failure to do so ignores the plain language reading of the EAF and New York's DEC intent to consider all sources of flooding, including stormwater runoff impacts. This issue isn't just procedural. This affects real homes. This affects real families. And this affects the long-term safety of our community. Again, Board, thank you very much for hearing me. And everybody at home, hello.[751.04][751.04](APPLAUSE)
I am Jack Blim, pastor from 106 Briary Road on the Knoll. We all care deeply about responsible development, but that must include protecting the natural environment that makes Dobbs Ferry so special. The EAF for the project claims there is no impact on plants and animals. This is not based on an independent study. Here's what we do know. The Knoll is home to eastern box turtles and eastern fence lizards, both species of special concern according to New York State DEC. We more often get to see the turtles, especially during their breeding season, as they move quietly through the Knoll, going about their business. Bald eagles are frequently spotted in the area. The Knoll is near a significant habitat for eagles as Tall Man Mountain State Park and Piermont Marsh, which are protected areas on the Hudson River, are directly across from us. These eagles rely on the extended green and wooded spaces of the Juring Nature Preserve and the Knoll. This project would impact their critical habitat. One of my most dramatic sightings was during a thunderstorm, when a bald eagle perched on a tree stump at the edge of my backyard, which borders the Knoll. I was standing at my back door when I caught sight of this magical creature landing, and we both froze in place while the storm passed. It was amazing. We've also had the excitement of spotting the eastern fence lizard while cleaning brush and rocks on our property. Both species are already on New York State's Threatened Species List. This project is set to disrupt vital nesting, breeding, and foraging areas. One acre of forest and 115 trees will be removed. It's a loss of habitat, a natural sound barrier, and a crucial windbreak. How can we say no to this section while having clear evidence of protected wildlife living here? Say yes. The village has a responsibility to ensure that an environmental study is conducted, rather than relying solely on the development's claims or dismissing important observations and concerns from the residents of our town without proper review. Say yes and acknowledge the impact on our plants and animals.
Hi, everyone. My name is Asaf Kohan. Before I talk about my slides, I thought I would take a minute just to acknowledge the humanity in this room. Everyone here is talking about specific things, but you could see the emotion and the passion that all of these wonderful people have about this project. I also want to say, I've lived in Dobbs Ferry 17 years. I have four kids. They've gone through the Dobbs Ferry School District, amazing district, who are in college now. We moved into our house, we bought it because it's abutting the Juring Estate. Once this road gets built, we'll be abutting another house. You know, I remember our Realtor telling us, this beautiful land behind your house, it's never going to be touched. Shocking that now it might be. Again, before I get to my slides, I also want to say, I'm a family doctor, I work in the city, I have families who are growing, they're moving to the suburbs. I'm always pushing the river towns, and especially Dobbs Ferry. And I have to say, based on this past year with the Knoll and what I've been seeing, it's more difficult to recommend for families to move to this area if this is how we're going to treat the constituents and how we feel, how we treat what we feel about our environment. So I'm just going to get to my slides. This is going to affect 115 trees. Sounds like a small number, but let's remember, each tree has an area around it, each tree has vegetation, so it's way more than just that little specific number. In addition, when you do construction, you're also affecting the roots of other abutting trees, so that many more trees will be affected by this. Let's go to the next slide. That's what we just talked about. Of course, global warming, you know, with less trees, we're going to have a lot more CO2 absorbed, we're not going to have it, and then we're going to have a lot of problems besides with the runoff and everything else that was talked about. Finally, you know, I was walking my dog the other day in the Juring Estate, right by where the Knoll's going to be, and I was just thinking, this is really the best place anyone could live. I've lived in many places in my life, it's just beautiful, right? The minute we do this, there's going to be less shade. As you can see, Dobbs Ferry ranks low in terms of preserving its canopy, and after this, it's going to be even worse.
Hi, my name is Josh Dellman. I live at 38 Luzern. I've lived here since 2019. I live very close to the Knoll, which is why I must urge you to reconsider the answer to Section 11 of the EAF. Because I live here and I love this place, I know the Knoll is too valuable for development to be dismissed as having no impact. The first part of the impact on open space and recreation statement says the proposed action may result... Wow, that's really bad timing.[1199.25][1199.25](LAUGHTER) My phone just... I don't remember. Okay. Well, okay, I'll just go off the cuff here. Basically, what A, B, and C, and D are talking about is whether or not the action is going to, excuse me, the development is going to affect natural functions and whether or not it's going to affect the recreational resource and open space. And, that's okay. And, you know, we live here and we know that this area is used recreational space. And I'm not talking about the Juring Estate, I'm talking about the Knoll. We have some photographs here of, especially on the top there, people using the space known as the Knoll for recreation. I know because I've used it, I live here, we all know this space. I've participated in birthday parties and scavenger hunts and whatnot there. And so, you know, it is informally used as an open space, which is why we really, really want you to check yes, rather than no on the statement, EAF 11. We have one more speaker here from 38 Luzern.
My name is Gemma. My name is Gemma Damm, and I live at 38 Luzern Road. When you cut down the Knoll, there will be more water lying around because the water gets absorbed by the dirt, and if it does not have any place to go, it will go into the street and make floods. Other people will get floods too, even if they're not in Dobbs Ferry. Because we breathe in oxygen, it turns into carbon dioxide. Trees do the opposite. The more carbon dioxide there is, the more ice will melt and make floods. This is why I think we should not cut down the Knoll.[1327.25][1327.25](APPLAUSE)
My name is Gabrielle Jayden, and I live at 23 Summit Terrace. And 20 years ago, I stood in this very room, at this very podium, with my toddler on my hip, trying to fight for protection of the Knoll and the other paper streets. So this is very disheartening for me that I'm here again. It's a very odd situation. Anyway, it's interesting how we got to this point. I want to focus on the legal and regulatory shortcomings in this process, particularly the Planning Board's response to the environmental assessment form, the EAF Part II, Section 12, regarding the impact on critical environmental areas. The Planning Board did acknowledge that there would be an impact, but they only marked it as a small impact. That is simply not accurate. Based on the DEC's own guidelines, the project will result in at least a moderate to large impact, particularly in two areas. 12B, reduction in the quality of the resource or characteristic that led to the designation of the CEA. The Knoll directly affects the watershed, which in turn impacts the Juring Nature Preserve. Any disruption to this area will degrade the various environmental qualities that led to its protection in the first place. And I just want to mention, there are a lot of people here who may not know, they're talking about removing like 1,300 tons of rock and soil. And how can you say that's not going to affect the bedrock that extends into the Juring Estate? So it's beyond me, I don't get it. Okay. 12C, other impacts. The project will alter the hydrology of the Knoll and its surrounding environment, permanently affecting water runoff, soil stability, and ecological balance. The absence of a proper visual impact analysis means we have no clear assessment of how this development will impact sightlines, tree coverage, and the overall character of this protected area. Given these facts, the Planning Board must revise their response in EAF Part II, Section 12, to reflect the scope of environmental harm. Additionally, we cannot ignore the legal precedent set by the 2005 demapping resolution, that's why I was here 20 years ago, which permanently removed the Knoll as a public roadway. That resolution was not symbolic, which permanently removed the Knoll as a public roadway. That resolution was not symbolic... I already said that. Okay. To disregard that now would be a fundamental failure of due process and a betrayal of past planning commitments. The law is clear. The environmental impact is undeniable, and the will of the community is strong. The Planning Board must take a hard look at the real impacts of this project and change their determination accordingly.
Hi, I'm Matt Carmody. I live at 42 Luzern Road. I'm going to talk about the need for an environmental impact statement to address the concerns of transportation, air emissions, and noise impacts.[1562.13][1562.13](LAUGHTER) Thank you.[1564.13][1564.13](LAUGHTER)
Professional planners get less time.[1571.25][1571.25](LAUGHTER)
Thank you. So we are extremely concerned. I'm going to bring some new data to the conversation that others have raised about transportation. We are concerned that the truck traffic for construction will last two years. We know that the trees, 115 of them that will be cut down, don't just disappear when they get cut down. They have to be taken apart. They can't even be felled most of the time so that they wouldn't fall on the conservation easements or on the neighboring homes. So there will be a need to bring in crane trucks or cherry pickers to take those trees apart. That generates truck trips. Also, the parts of the tree that are taken down that are not able to be chipped because they're too big, they need to be taken away in a large truck. We've also heard about there being 1,000 cubic yards of rock and soil that need to be taken away, more large trucks. The truck traffic volume, types of trucks, the truck routing is not being addressed. The east side of Briary Road, on four of its six blocks, already has no parking. Is there to be no parking on all of Briary Road during construction so that the large trucks can get through? Also, there are already significant traffic delays on the approach of Briary Road and Ashford Avenue. When these large construction trucks are waiting, we will have to wait behind them. There's going to be significant traffic impacts. Next slide. So this is the type of vehicle that takes the most large pieces of trees and the largest pieces of rock. It's an 18 cubic yard dump truck. It can handle over 80,000 pounds. That is the legal limit for any vehicle on a road. So this 40-ton truck will be coming down a steep hill, approaching Briary Road, loaded with 40 tons of rock. We don't know if it'll be able to stop. Next, 10 feet away from 98 Briary Road, these trucks will be rumbling by. They'll be able to generate 80 to 90 decibels of noise. Anything above 70 decibels over a prolonged period causes hearing damage. That needs to be assessed in an environmental impact statement. Next, this truck pollutes. It has particulate matter that could cause respiratory damage in younger children and older adults. An air emissions analysis needs to be done on these types of trucks at the numbers that it's going to generate. So in summary, an environmental impact statement needs to address the construction, air emissions, traffic, and noise. And I reviewed the Seeker Handbook, and in sections called "Common Mitigation Measures" and another section called "What Can the Lead Agency Do If a Project Sponsor Submits an Inadequate Draft Scope?", it lists, "require traffic study." I believe you're already going to do that. Thank you. Also, scheduling construction to minimize noise impacts on local receptors, that means people. Designate sensitive receptors for visual impact analysis and monitoring air emissions and noise generation during construction. So I urge you to require an environmental impact statement with these studies to identify significant impacts.
Hello. My name's Nancy Delmarco. I'm 81 Grandview. Like many in Dobbs Ferry... Like many in Dobbs Ferry, I first heard about this project when I saw the signs. Good design, I thought, this must be serious. Little did I know how serious, and I'm learning that tonight, actually. So I signed up for the emails and took a ride up Briery Road. I remember discussing the demapping of the paper streets when I served on the Village Board of Trustees from 2002 to 2004. Sat right over there. Prior to that, I was involved in the drafting of the LWRP, the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. As a trustee, I was liaison to the LWRP. I later served on the Waterfront Committee, the ARB, and the CAB. Plus, I had lived down the hill from this neighborhood for many years. Born on Lefergie Avenue, and bought another house on Lefergie Avenue, and lived and built a house on Haynes, which by the way, we found Rockunder. I know the area well and aware of the many pitfalls that such a project would bring. So when I saw this, I knew something could and must be done. This type of development was why we had demapped the paper streets in the first place. So Section 17, entitled Consistency with Community Plans, is subtitled, "The Proposed Action Is Not Consistent with Adopted Land Use Plans." And it was checking no. I thought, who did that? Where did that come from? It is an adopted, there is an adopted land use plan. In fact, there are two, the LWRP and the Vision Plan. The answer is not no, the correct answer is unequivocal yes. There are relevant issues in this section that must be addressed. 25 years ago, the village was growing. There was more traffic, more classrooms were needed in our schools, and of course, the parking issues. Village boards and committees, with some of you I was on, village boards and committees saw this, so they worked to do something about it. They developed the WR— LWRP to encompass the entire village, from the Hudson River to the Sawmill. And they adopted the Vision Plan. These are adopted land use plans. They were created to preserve our unique natural areas and withstand the test of time. The salient point I make is that in Section 17, the yes box must be checked in order to, for these issues to be acknowledged. I urge the planning board to stand by the vision we spent years creating. Please honor the tireless work of the countless volunteers, many of you in this room, and the elected officials who worked to preserve our idyllic community we call home. Thank you to the members of the planning board for your time and hard work given to this matter. I remember having sat over there with some controversial situations myself.[793.04][793.04][applause]
Hello, my name is Larry Cassisneen, I live at 41 Hilldale Road, Dobbs Ferry. The proposal before this board is not just about one developer building one housing project on one paper street. Make no mistake, a vote to approve this project will echo far beyond the Knoll, with long-term consequences for many families and for the future of Dobbs Ferry for many years to come. The Knoll is one of 41 paper streets in Dobbs Ferry. So approving this project will set a dangerous precedent. It will open the door for dozens of previously protected paper streets to be developed, including the Hilldale Paper Street adjacent to my house. Hundreds of trees will be cut down, pristine areas will be paved over with asphalt, and the risk of flooding will increase. The decline in quality of life will lower my property's value and the property values of many other homeowners and cause the village to suffer financially. As this slide shows, the property taxes gained from these two new houses on the Knoll will be more than outweighed by taxes lost from declining property values village-wide. This falloff in property taxes will have a major impact, since they pay for Dobbs Ferry's schools and other services. I urge you to consider whether you want this as your legacy. Finally, I'm concerned that the lawyers in contact with the planning board, the lawyers for the village and Mr. Cortese's lawyer, may have assured you that this proposal passes a legal muster, and therefore you've thrown up your hands and said, gee, if the lawyers say this project is legal, we have no choice but to approve it. If that's the case, if you really feel this project is a done deal, then with all due respect, you're not doing your job. As members of the planning board, you have not only the authority, but also the obligation to step back, consider all the problems associated with this project, problems that you may well have been kept in the dark about. If you look at the many laws and codes that this project would violate, then voting against this most misbegotten of housing proposals should be the obvious decision.
Good evening, my name is James Majoe, resident for 31 years at 41 Highland Avenue. I want to thank the planning board for your time and dedication to our village. I appreciate the effort that goes into these decisions, and I ask that you keep an open mind as we reconsider Section 18, Consistency with Community Character. How can the board mark no to this entire section? The proposed development does not align with our village's character, and here's why. On question B, emergency services will be impacted. The project is in an area with steep terrain and difficult access. This complicates fire response times and increases risks for both residents and first responders. Fire engines can't make this turn as it is now going up Briery Road. On question D, this project interferes with a recognized public resource. The village Vision Plan identifies the Knoll as open space. This project would erase that designation, interfering with the public's enjoyment of one of our last remaining green spaces. The development would take place feet from Jering Estate Nature Preserve, which contains our village's largest trail system. The heavy construction, rock removal, and increased traffic would make it difficult, if not unsafe, for the community to access this public resource. Approving this project contradicts that commitment and sets a dangerous precedent. For question F, this project is out of scale with the surrounding neighborhood. The architectural plans show buildings that are completely out of character with the homes around them. This isn't just a minor change, it's a fundamental shift that does not fit the landscape of Dobbs Ferry, nor the conservation easements in place to protect this land for future generations. Ignoring them weakens the integrity of conservation efforts throughout our village. Once Knoll is gone, it's gone forever. This project isn't about today, it's about the future of our village. Do we want to be a community that protects its natural spaces, or one that lets them disappear? The board must reconsider Section 18. While you may not agree with every point, there are strong reasons to revise your answers. I urge you to change your response to yes, and acknowledge that significant long-term impact of this project. The Knoll is worth protecting. Let's not allow it to be erased.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Torres, and my family and I have lived in Dobbs Ferry for 25 years. Our home is directly adjacent to the Knoll, and I'm here tonight because this development puts my home, my family, and our entire community at risk. The most important issue I want to address is safety. The proposed private road begins right at the corner of my driveway. That means a 12-foot retaining wall will block visibility, turning on an already difficult turn into a blind, dangerous intersection at Briery and Heatherway. This isn't just an inconvenience, it's a serious hazard. Drivers won't be able to see oncoming traffic, pedestrians who have no sidewalk will be caught off-guard by speeding cars. We're talking about a real risk of injury, or worse, someone will get hurt. But that's not all. Traffic is already a nightmare on Ashford Ave, and Briery Road is now a shortcut for drivers trying to avoid the congestion. This project adds even more cars to roads that were never designed to handle this kind of volume. We're talking more speeding, more congestion, and more danger. Now, think about what happens if these impacts are ignored. For years, this land has been a peaceful haven, a place where families feel safe. But if this reckless development moves forward, that peace will be shattered. Beyond the safety risks, there's the destruction of the black oak tree that stands just feet from my home. That tree could face, could fall, posing a deadly risk to my family. Our quality of life will become even more stressful, as these industrial watersheds could result in water damage to my home as well. This is a road being carved into a hillside where no road should ever be. Cars speeding down steep slopes, headlights shining into bedrooms where homeowners should be sleeping, it's an unsafe, unthinkable situation. And remember, this is just the start. The developer is beginning with two homes, but we all know what comes next, more homes, more cars, more problems. And let's not forget, the Jering Nature Preserve just steps away. It's a beloved space for families, dog walkers, hikers, and scouts. Does it really make sense to flood that area with more cars, especially when there are no sidewalks? And to make way for all of this, 115 trees will be destroyed. This isn't progress, it's a mistake. And once it's done, we cannot undo it. I urge the planning board to make the right decision. Please consider the long-term impact on our community, our safety, and our quality of life. Our lives matter too.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Scott Hansen, I live at 97 Judson Avenue in Dobbs Ferry. I do not live adjacent to or anywhere near the Knoll. I'm a former resident of Irvington, but I've lived in Dobbs Ferry since 2006. I'm not a member of Protect the Knoll, and I have not signed any petitions. I'm here as a resident of Dobbs Ferry to simply state my opinions on this development and on the review proceedings. I've spent countless hours of my life working and playing adjacent to the Knoll in the Jering Preserve with my family members and with my friends. I've walked many times on the village-owned public access right-of-way, which is the demapped street on the Knoll, carefully avoiding, to not trespass on any private properties there. I haven't, I have not spoken in opposition to any other of the properties developed by and/or owned by Mr. Cortese, such as the building he's developed and I believe still owns on Main Street, housing the Climbing Wolf Coffee Shop, which some of you may know as a location where the Dobbs Ferry Board of Trustees has held several public meetings. I did not speak in opposition to the new apartment building on Ashford Avenue just west of the Ogden Fire Station, which I believe he has redeveloped, and where I believe he has his offices, and where I believe only three of the 12 apartments have so far been rented, while the other nine residences built by Mr. Cortese remain vacant. I was also not opposed, back in the day, to the redevelopment by Mr. Cortese of what I believe is his own home in a place of a previous house in Irvington where I used to live. My own home was built in the 1950s as part of a development project at that time. However, as the board has heard tonight, this proposed development on the Knoll is different, because it's not a redevelopment of an existing structure, as the others are, which I've mentioned. This is a fragile woodland contiguous to a fragile and already in jeopardy, jeopardy nature preserve. As we've heard tonight, the Knoll also contains several conservation easements which are protected in their entirety by law and by code, portions of which will be seized in what seems to be some abstract form of eminent domain, which is a tool meant to be used by public entities for the public benefit, and not for private use and profit. But passions aside, there are obviously countless questions which remain about the conservation aspects of this development alone, which it seems to me tonight have either not been acknowledged or have not been answered. And again, passions aside, there seem to be countless additional non-conservation but legal questions and challenges which have been submitted by the public, but which have not yet been acknowledged as being received, have not been addressed, and have not been answered. So I recognize that reviewing and addressing them all will take time and money. I do not envy the volunteers on this planning board in that task. But, while not professing to be an expert on the rules, codes, and guidelines governing the planning board in Dobbs Ferry, it's my belief as a resident of the village that the planning board is or should be, unenviably, duty-bound to all residents of the village to spend the time necessary to systematically acknowledge receipt of, review, address, and answer line by line all of the seemingly valid issues submitted by the public before making their final and then fully informed decision.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Sudak, I live at 23 Highland Avenue in Dobbs Ferry. I've lived here for 30 years. The following presentation is intended for the benefit of the board when considering this application. Tonight, I will summarize information the board has already received in a letter regarding tree and natural resource preservation in the village of Dobbs Ferry as it pertains to the Knoll. This will provide context for the next presentation. Village Code 300-46, Natural and Scenic Resource Protection, Part A, General Site Design Guidelines, Paragraph 1, states, "To the maximum extent practicable where significant natural features or areas of historic or cultural value exist on a property or an adjacent property, an applicant shall give priority to their preservation by locating new development away from those features or areas." Item 1 of Part A goes on to state that, "Priority for protection shall be given to the features listed below. Among those features is Item C, mature trees, specimen trees, and significant stands of trees and vegetation." Village Code 300-14, General Terms, defines specimen trees as, and I quote, "A tree 24 inches or greater in diameter, or a tree of notable size above the natural grade, type, and uniqueness." The Legislative Intent of 300-51, Tree Preservation, states, "Our community's investment in its tree resources has accrued over many years. This investment can be rapidly squandered by indiscriminate damage to and destruction of trees, especially mature and/or specimen trees and shrubs." Part D of 300-5, Tree Preservation, defines prohibited activities and states, "No person, firm, or corporation shall purposely, carelessly, or negligently take any action that will result in killing, destroying, or significantly degrading the immediate or long-term viability of any protected tree." Village Code 300-14 defines a protected tree as, and I quote, "A tree with a diameter at breast height of 8 inches or more, regardless of location." In order to mitigate the indiscriminate damage to and destruction of protected and specimen trees, a critical root zone must first be established. As defined in Village Code, a critical root zone, or CRZ, is, and I quote, "The area containing the volume of roots necessary for maintenance of tree health and stability." As I said, this is background for the next presentation, but I just want to point out that I noted tonight that in one of the presentations earlier for the shed being built on Washington Avenue, that the chairman asked about critical root zone of the trees that are gonna surround this development. And I have never once in any of these meetings to protect the Knoll, or about this project on the Knoll, I have never heard any board member ask about critical root zone of the trees surrounding this development.
Mark Sudak, 23 Highland Avenue, Dobbs Ferry. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I come before you tonight to bolster the presentation you've just heard regarding tree preservation and natural resource preservation in the village of Dobbs Ferry. I'm an ISA-certified arborist, and tonight I would like to bring to the planning board's attention one specific tree that should be a large deciding factor in the approval or denial of the proposed development in the Knoll. The tree in question stands on private property at 101 Briery Road. This tree is a black oak, Quercus velutina. This tree does not appear in Mr. Cortese's site map, but this tree stands approximately 10 feet from the edge of the proposed road, and this tree has a diameter or breast height or a DBH of 47 inches. Just to remind the planning board, a protected tree in Dobbs Ferry is classified as any tree regardless of location with a DBH of 8 inches or greater. A specimen tree is classified as any tree with a DBH of 24 inches or greater. This black oak with a DBH of 47 inches is nearly six times the required diameter of a protected tree, and nearly twice the required diameter of a specimen tree. Referencing the presentation just given on Chapter 300, Section 46 of the Village Code, the applicant shall prioritize specimen trees over the development in the village of Dobbs Ferry, and the planning board shall determine the significance of said specimen tree. That's the canopy spread of that tree, by the way, about 100 feet. Referencing the presentation just given on Chapter 300, Section 51 of the Village Code, I would like to address the critical root zone, or the CRZ, of this particular protected specimen oak. In accordance with the critical root zone equation as outlined in Dobbs Ferry Village Code, which reads, DBH times 1.5 times 2. At 47 inches in diameter, this protected specimen oak possesses a critical root zone diameter of a— oak possesses a critical root zone diameter of 141 feet or a radius of 70.5 feet. The distance between 101 Briary Road and 98 Briary Road is approximately 80 feet. The critical root zone of this oak has a radius of 70.5 feet. With these measurements, it is clear that the critical root zone of this oak completely engulfs the proposed roadway between the two houses. As stated in Village Code, there are several activities that are prohibited within the critical root zone of a protected tree. These include the following: traversal, access, or parking by construction vehicles; compaction of soil due to construction or other activities; stockpiling of construction materials; excavation; manual construction activities; installation of impervious surfaces, i.e. a road, over more than 25% of the root zone; severing or trenching through more than 25% of the root zone; and finally, grade changes exceeding three inches within the critical root zone. The proposed development checks all the boxes for prohibited activities within the critical root zone of this protected specimen oak. I want to make it very clear to the planning board that by approving this project, you will be ignoring Village Code and instead approving the damage, decline, potential failure, or inevitable death of a protected specimen oak that stands on private property. And just as an aside, Mr. Chairman, I was very happy to hear you speak about tree protection for the building of a shed. The Knoll is not a shed. Okay? I would imagine that you would utilize the same protection for this 47-inch specimen tree if you're going to utilize that for a shed. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cece Scott Hansen, but funnily enough, I go by the nickname Woods, specifically because I like the woods. I live at 97 Judson Avenue. You saw my dad recently come up here. This speech may be rather informal because I did not originally intend to speak, but as I heard everyone else present today, I remembered last time I came into this room when I watched a very similar presentation to this one. And I had just come home before coming here after, well, playing in the woods behind my house, and I had rather profound grass stains on my knees. And when I saw that other people had noticed the grass stains, I, well, rather awkwardly blurted out, "I like trees." And that's, again, also why I chose the name Woods for myself. Now, standing in front of all of these other people, I realize something about this village, and that's that all of you like trees too. And I believe that the three words I said that day, although not quite graceful, perfectly portray the message that we're all trying to send to all of you on the board. That, and you've all seen the facts at this point. Frankly, I think they should be enough to convince you, but if you still find yourselves questioning whether or not to go with the destruction of all of that beautiful forestry in favor of profit, I ask you, don't you like trees too?
I'm Susan Santini. My husband and I live at 104 Briary Road, where we have lived for 25 years. Along with our neighbors, we have grave concerns about the damage to our homes posed by this development. The engineering firm hired by the village shares these concerns. A recent memo prepared by that firm recommends that the rock removal may require monitoring of adjacent existing structures for possible settlement, cracking, and vibration during construction. So here we are, Dobbs Ferry residents facing months and months of drilling, blasting, and digging of a massive amount of bedrock. Our homes will be in harm's way, and not just during the construction phase. As Steve Davis, the civil engineer that the Protect the Knoll group has retained, observed, breaking up that bedrock is akin to fracking. That fractured bedrock will create new pathways for water to enter and flood our basements. Of the 20 or so houses immediately adjacent to the Knoll, some have stood for nearly a century. My home was built in 1927. These old homes are going to be in trouble. Other neighbors who live in newer homes, they're just as concerned. Several of these homes have large boulders in their basements. That's a whopper. And they are surely, those, those boulders are certainly connected to the bedrock that's going to be blasted. Furthermore, some have sizable boulders just a few yards away from their house. So how could tax revenue from a couple of new homes outweigh the damage and devaluation of dozens of homes as property owners? Don't we have rights? What happens when our homes are damaged? When our property values are compromised? Is a developer going to be on the hook for remediation costs? And if this project were to go forward, God forbid, would this board insist that an escrow account be set up? We have lived in our homes, paid taxes, and contributed to village life for years. We worked hard to become homeowners. Our homes are our most valuable and treasured assets. It wasn't a piece of cake for my husband and me to come up with the funds for a down payment and to make our mortgage payments. How could it possibly be right that now we have to worry that our beloved home will be damaged? So let me put it to you this way. How would you feel if this was happening to you? Would you be alarmed if your house was in the, in these crosshairs? We may not be your next-door neighbors, but we're your neighbors. And as members of the board, I hope you feel a moral obligation to protect us from this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Farrah Libretan. I live at 61 Briary Road. My house is built into the bedrock that was just referred to. This is at the corner of Meadow Way, where the watershed from Jering comes right out from underneath my home, which often causes a dangerous ice slick on that corner if anybody's ever driven up Briary Road in the winter. As concerning as hearing cars skid out on the ice slick is, it was more alarming when the water table became so high one year that it actually pressed up through the foundation of my home and caused significant damage and cost to us. We actually had to break through the foundation in order to provide egress so a waterfall from Jering could come out from underneath my home. So I know there's discussion of mitigating future problems with water from this project. We have significant current concerns about water issues that I can't imagine would be helped by this future endeavor that's proposed here. I'm also here to read a letter from a past mayor of Dobbs Ferry, Joseph Bova, so if you would please indulge me, to the members of the planning board. I understand that the Dobbs Ferry Planning Board is in the pre-submission phase of the project known as the Knoll in our village. It has been my experience that members of the planning board have usually brought an excellent perspective to projects such as this. It is unfortunate that the current Board of Trustees decided to override the precedent setting demapping issues that includes this large parcel. In my opinion, this should have precluded the development of this area of the village, but I leave the argument to the lawyers. I can tell you that the decision to proceed with this demapping over 25 years ago was not done in a vacuum. It was done with the sensitivity that many of these paper streets were not able to be easily developed, posed environmental challenges, and did not have the proper frontage. In the case of the Knoll, all three conditions seem to exist. For whatever reason, the mayor and the Board of Trustees opted not to enforce a duly-passed action at the time that was fully supported by many residents and was specifically mentioned in the vision plan. As the planning board has been declared the lead agency for the Knoll under SEACRA, I urge you to look closely at the different elements of the EAF. Anyone who knows anything about this section of the village would definitely agree that the massive proposal will have severe negative impacts, not only on the immediate area, but even areas below Briary Road and Upper Hilldale. Flooding situations already occur, and that is before more than 100 trees are removed, and there will be vast areas of permeable surfaces gone forever. I urge this board to look at all of the evidence and use your own knowledge of this area to proceed and declare a positive SEACRA declaration. This at least will cause a pause in what seems to be a fast-track project, and all the SEACRA questions will be required to be answered. Signed, Joseph J. Bova. Thank you.
May I?
Sure.
Hi. My name is Christina Hahn. I live at 90 Briary Road. My family and I live directly across the street from the Knoll. Protect the Knoll is more than a movement. It's where my kids went sledding, sold lemonade, and greeted Santa on the fire trucks. It's where today we hang out with our dog, we play cornhole, we invite ice cream trucks for family gatherings. To think about the upheaval, destruction, and construction that would go on right at my doorstep, in front of my bedroom and living room windows, brings tears to my eyes. This nightmare has caused so much stress for me and my family, and obviously, a lot of people. I'm emotional because the Knoll is my home. It's where we've made countless memories with our daughters, our friends, our family, and where we will continue to make them. It's where I've lived the longest in my life and where I plan to stay. We moved to Dobbs because of the family I have here and for the open space, good commute, and good schools. Though as a hardened New Yorker, I didn't think the one thing I'd fall in love with most was community. But I fell hard and jumped right in. I volunteered for everything and served on boards from River Arts to the Christian Preschool to the Dobbs PTSA Hudson River Museum. Heck, even the mayor asked me to join his Human Rights and Diversity Committee, which I immediately did. So just like you, sitting there, I get why you do it. You love this village and you care. And now here I am as part of Protect the Knoll, and it's the most important group I've joined to date. Protect the Knoll is an amazing diverse group of old and new Dobbs Ferrians. We are the essence of what Dobbs Ferry strives to be. I don't want to stand here and disparage Mr. Cortese as a River Town's native and family man who should know better, as he must surely understand the true meaning of community. And as evidenced by my neighbors and our petition signers, Protect the Knoll is supported by many who, like me, love this community. We are all Team Dobbs. We want a solution that works for everyone, not just the developer. My friends here have gone over all the legal issues: climate change and flooding, increased traffic, parking overflow, and the cutting down of over 100 trees. And there are others who wanted to make comments tonight who couldn't be here, and which is another reason this public hearing should be continued. But members of the board, I speak from the heart. The Knoll is special. It's about safeguarding the future of my home, my neighborhood, and our community as a whole. It's about ensuring that it remains a place, it's about ensuring that it remains a place where my family, all our families, and yours too, can thrive for generations to come. So please, join us in protecting it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And don't forget, everyone, we're going to be doing the same thing next month, so don't feel like if you have, if you have to say something, you can't wait.
My name is Mario Romanioli. I live at 27 Hilldale. I'm about as far away from the Knoll as you can possibly get and still be on Briary Road. I am at the corner of Briary and Hilldale where Briary takes a left to Ashford Avenue. I'm not a joiner. I work in the city. My kids went to school in the city. I don't love nature the way some of my neighbors do, although I was a biology major. I studied ecology before many of the people in this room were born. I have a couple of observations. Number one, 35 years ago, we put an addition on our house. To put a 13-by-20-foot addition, we had to chip out so much bedrock to get a foundation was unbelievable. Over the last 30 years, I have spent a fair amount of money trying to keep my basement from flooding. It still floods about twice a year. Now, I think the flooding concerns is something I would like to speak to. So when you go up Briary Road from my house, the first cross street you come to is Shady Lane. And the corner there, Shady and Briary, is what I call the Valley of Tears. Anytime there's been a rainstorm, for five days later, there's a stream which flows down Briary Road. In the fall and the winter, that becomes a sheet of ice. Now, I didn't know that the extent of the flooding they had up at the top of Briary Road. What I can tell you is the extent of the flooding we have at the bottom is sometimes quite extensive. Two years ago, after a late-fall torrential rainstorm, the flow through the storm drains was so high that when I came out to walk the dog, the manhole at the end of my driveway had been lifted up and moved 10 feet down the road. So without doing anything to the watershed area or doing anything to the absorptive ability of the, of the land, we sometimes get wicked floods. And I think this is something that you could, you have to bear in mind. The other thing is that when that water freezes and turns into a sheet of ice, which it does every winter, this is a treacherous area. Anything that is going to disrupt this, and I'm sure the board has no idea about this, is just we people who are driving our cars up and down or walking the dog. And, you know, a few times I have taken a header, and now I'm 73 and I can't afford to break any hips, so I have to tell you, these are things that are not trivial. Okay? Now, you know, I have nothing against developers. I'm a capitalist, but I, I just think that, you know, my kids went to school in the city. When my son was in grammar school, he used to bring his city friends home. And they would go up to the Jering Preserve, and the city boys could not get used to the idea that they didn't have to have a nanny or supervision. They could go up and maraud and explore the foundations of the old buildings that were probably built when Teddy Roosevelt used to come up here to hunt. This is something we don't have to mess up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I wasn't on the list. I wasn't planning to speak, but since the last two speakers spoke about flooding, I will too. I live on LaFergie. My name is Jan Alshar. I live at 72 LaFergie. I've lived there since 1985. We were, we were flooded, well, we were flooded in 2007 because that we, it was at the tail end of the winter, and there was a sheet of ice over all the land. When water has no place to go, it'll go into your house, and that's what happened. Storm Ida flooded our lower, the lower part of our house, causing $30,000 to $40,000 worth of damage because Dobbs Ferry's drain system cannot handle what we are experiencing more and more, which is catastrophic flooding. The, there's construction down the, down the road from us, I think it's at 87. That's, and even normal rains, that sends tons of particulate dirt, rocks, along with the water, which is, which fills up the drains fast. And, well, I can't imagine what destroying 115 or more trees is going to do. Trees and soil hold on to water. If you don't have trees and soil, the water goes someplace else, mainly into our homes. So I'm very worried about what's going to come down from the Knoll and what's going to come down my street, which it does every, every time it rains. We've protected as much as we can with all mechanical help, but I think we're facing, with climate change and the kind of destruction of soil and rock, we're destroying the places where water goes, and that's going to destroy homes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Caneely, and I live at 504 Broadway, and I have three points. One, it's possible that your default position is, the proposed development is legal, we have, our hands are tied. This petition, that position betrays a lack of imagination and vision. I am confident that this esteemed board... I am confident that this esteemed board can take all the data presented and incorporate it in a way that honors all the legitimate, compelling, truthful objections to the plan. My second point is that rejection of this proposal would be in alignment with the village's other sustainability efforts. I just got a sustainable Dobbs thing about composting. Don't waste my time with window dressing about sustainable Dobbs if on a big-ticket item with, that really is going to conserve our natural resources and have high impact on sustainability, if you're going to vote no. So I urge you to be in alignment with the rest of the village on sustainability. My final point is, just because you could argue something's legal, doesn't make it ethical, wise, or advisable. I implore each one of you appointed to be stewards and to act in the best interest of Dobbs Ferry and to uphold the Dobbs Ferry Code and New York State law, I implore each of you to reject this proposal and vote to protect the Knoll. Thank you.
I was just reminded by that woman, Dobbs Ferry is a tree city. 1500, 115 trees coming down, does not a tree city make?
My name is Dave Safrah. Actually, I live in East Irvington, but I've been spending about a considerable amount of time at 134 Hildale Road ever since our first grandchild was born, who's now four months old. I feel like I do have some experience with one little aspect of this in that there was a project, a similar one, more isolated, but also with a great deal of amount of rock busting, and the amount of noise pollution that we had to endure over, I'd say at least it was at least two years, this seems a similar kind of situation. We were babysitting our neighbor's daughter during that time, and I was thinking, this really affects, you know, a human being's life, a little human being over the course of two years of their formative life. So I'm thinking in selfish terms that I'm going to be doing a lot of childcare at 134 Hildale Road, and I already know how much noise this is likely to create, so thank you very much for your time.
Okay, if we're done locally, Christina, do we have any remote comments? Okay. Well, then I propose we continue the public hearing until next month. Do you have a second? All in favor? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Yeah, I would thank you, everyone, for their comments.
And please note that we've all taken notes with your comments. We are going to look at them closely, and we're going to continue to work on them.
I just wanted an affirmative nod from everyone that all of the outstanding issues that we have been waiting for...